Good evening and welcome to the special presentations of the City Council of the City of Moreno Valley. Today is October 16, 2018, and it's 5:35. The first presentation is a business spotlight, Los Canteros. Mayor Gutierrez will speak and present the certificate of recognition and USB to the owners. Mr. Pedro Garcia and Mrs. Dulce Andrade.
Thank you, Mayor Protembaka. If I could have Mr. Pedro Garcia and Mrs. Dulce Andrade come up here and also with their children as well? Let's give them a round of applause. Well, tonight, we have a great family business. It's really a great story as well because they also live here in Moreno Valley and do business here in Moreno Valley. Los Canteros Grill is a family-friendly environment filled with music, bright colors, and delicious food. Located at 24651 Alessandra Boulevard, Los Canteros Grill is sure to be a crowd pleaser. The four canteros clay pots in the logo represent a member in the family of the owners, Mr. Pedro Garcia and Mrs. Dulce Andrade. They take great pride in their commitment to providing only the best homemade dishes. Be sure to ask for the mulitas made with homemade masa and cooked to order, filled with your choice of meat, cheese, and topped with another tortilla. Or ask for the mouth-watering pamboso? Pambaso? Pambaso, okay. Two slices of bread soaked in sauce, fried and filled with chorizo and potatoes. You can also keep it just simple and order some tacos or a burrito with your choice of meat. No matter the craving, Los Canteros is sure to have something for everyone. Today, we recognize Los Canteros Grill with this business spotlight video for them to share. Please roll the video.
At Los Canteros Grill, we have authentic homemade dishes from southern Mexico. Try our waraches of fried masa base topped with beans and meat. Mulitas, meat and melted cheese in between fried corn tortillas. Or pambaso, chorizo and potato surrounded by sauce-covered bread, a Mexico City favorite. Or our variety of tacos and burritos if you want to keep it simple. Los Canteros Grill, ready to spice up your next meal?
Great. I don't know about you, but I really want to go there. Looks amazing, the food. So, without further ado, on behalf of the City Council of the City of Moreno Valley, we recognize Los Canteros Grill is recognized with this recognition for being a family-friendly business in our city.
I'm really nervous. I mean, you guys can tell. Thank you for, you know, the City of Moreno Valley for everything they've been doing. For the police department, they've been helping a lot too. Mayor Gutierrez too. And thank you for everyone. And I'm not really, you know, good on the microphone because I'm nervous. But I'm good talking one-on-one, but not a lot of people. So, thank you and have a great day.
She's good with it.
No, no, I'm not. I just wanted to say, Mayor, we have inspired us in becoming small business owners. Your motivation, your support, and the help of the Economic Development Center and the Small Business Development Center, we have made one of our dreams come true. We thank you and for your help and advice, and we truly appreciate all of your support. Thank you.
Let's give another round of applause to Los Canteros. And thank you to Ms. Andrade for her kind words about our staff because we really do work very hard to bring businesses to Moreno Valley and ensure that they're successful. Our next presentation is another business spotlight, and it's Woody's Brew House. And Mayor Exion Gutierrez will speak and present the certificate of recognition and the USB to owner, Mr. Wayne Woodlift.
Okay. If we can have Mr. Wayne Woodlift come up here? Let's give him a round of applause for opening this restaurant in our great city. So, located at 23060 Alessandra Boulevard, Woody's Brew House offers a casually elegant environment, gourmet cuisine, and live music every night. With their very own microbrewery on site, Woody's experienced brewmaster has begun creating cutting-edge brews, including Woody's Imperial Blonde and Woody's American Wheat. Owner, Mr. Wayne Woody Woodlift, is committed to serving high-quality food, cocktails, and handcrafted beer at reasonable prices. Whether coming in on your lunch break or enjoying a night out, Woody's has something for everyone. And I gotta say, I saw the photos of your grand opening and they were amazing. So, congratulations to Woody's. I'm very excited that you've taken the leadership to have something there because for many years, that was just sitting there, as you know. So, let's go ahead and roll the video.
Hungry, thirsty? Woody's got you covered. We're unlike any restaurant in Moreno Valley. Our brewmaster expertly crafts freshly brewed beers from bat to tap. Our in-house smoker slow cooks our barbecue for a perfect slice of paradise. We have a full menu of casual and elegant cuisine, including our gourmet Woody's Original Burgers, as well as delicious lunch and dinner buffets. Join us for our daily happy hour and world-class entertainment every night. Woody's Restaurant and Craft Brewery, your night out just got a whole lot better.
All right, let's give them another round of applause. And Mr. Woodlift, would you like to say a few words?
I'd just like to thank Mike Lee and his staff for everything he did for me, so, thank you.
So, let's give Woody's Grill another round of applause. And thank you, Mr. Woodlift, for your kind words about our staff because we really try hard and, as you could see, these businesses are recognizing our departments because they work very hard and diligently to bring you up to Moreno Valley. The next presentation is a recognition of the Moreno Valley Police Department, Classified Employee of the Quarter, Crime Analyst Kimberly Shaw. Councilmember Cabrera will speak and present the certificate of recognition to Crime Analyst Michelle.
Yeah, come on up, come on up. Kimberly Shaw, yeah, come on up. Let's give her a round of applause, everyone. Tonight, we'd like to give a special presentation and recognize Ms. Kimberly Shaw, Crime Analyst here who is nominated and named as the Moreno Valley Police Department Classified Employee of the Second Quarter. Crime Analyst Shaw works closely with other agencies to help in the apprehension of suspects. Crime Analyst Shaw worked with the robbery and burglary suppression team to identify a pattern of burglaries that led to the identification and arrest of a suspect. Those who work with Crime Analyst Shaw say that she is always approachable, willing to help, and always seeking opportunities to enhance her skills. Ms. Shaw is also said to have proven herself as one of the elite crime analysts. Ms. Shaw, in recognition of your accomplishments and exemplary attitude, the City Council of the City of Moreno Valley would like to present you with this certificate of recognition for all that you do. Congratulations.
I just wanted to say thank you to the men and women assigned to the Moreno Valley Station. It feels really good to be recognized by your peers, and I'm really glad that I'm a part of the Moreno Valley team. Also, thank you to my parents, my fellow analysts, and my friends at the station. Thank you, guys.
I know how exciting.
Thank you and congratulations to Crime Analyst Kimberly Shaw. And we'll give her another round of applause. The following presentation is recognition of the Moreno Valley Police Department Officer of the First Quarter, Mario Chavez, and recognition of Moreno Valley Police Department Officer of the Second Quarter, Michael Buena. And Mayor Gutierrez will speak and present the certificate of recognition to the officers.
All right. All right, if we can have, are you?
Mario.
Mario, okay. Very nice to meet you, officer. Nice to meet you as well. If I could also have, is the police chief here too? Well, why don't you, you don't want to come up too, or? Might as well. All right. So, if we can get you more in here so that way you're on the channel. All right, so I'm going to go ahead and read these two here. "Tonight, we honor and recognize a few of Moreno Valley's finest. Officer Mario Chavez was named Moreno Valley Police Department Officer of the First Quarter. Officer Chavez has proven that he possesses the quick-thinking skills, persistence, and active knowledge of the surrounding community necessary to solve many crimes before they turn into lengthy investigations. His ability to quickly analyze and act on various situations has gained recognition from both the MVPD station supervisors and other county agencies. Officer Chavez, on behalf of the City of Moreno Valley, I would like to present you with this certificate of recognition and thank you, your wife Lindsay, son Vincent, daughter Lucy, and mother Mary for being here tonight as well." So, Officer Chavez? Okay. And then this is for you. Would you like to say a few words?
Sure. I'd just like to thank everybody from the station, council, thank you. Everybody from the department, chief, lieutenant, and mostly my family. Thank you.
We also want to recognize the Officer of the Second Quarter as well, and that's Officer Buena?
Yes, sir.
Buena, okay. Who has gained recognition from his peers working the Riverside University Health System Medical Center for exhibiting exceptional empathy, kindness, professionalism, and leadership under stressful circumstances. Officer Buena's patience and willingness to listen to agitated patients at the hospital has served to diffuse many potentially volatile situations. Whether getting patients sandwiches or just lending a sympathetic ear, Officer Buena recognizes and continually acts on the knowledge of the importance of recognizing the human need of compassion in public service. Officer Buena, thank you on behalf of the City Council for your service to our city and the people at the Riverside University Health System Medical Center. As a gesture of our gratitude, we would like to present you the certificate of recognition for being named Officer of the Second Quarter. Congratulations.
I've prepared a speech. Actually, no, I haven't. I just want to say thank you to everybody, my family, for showing up. City Council, Chief, Lieutenant, everybody. Not good with being up in front of, you know, regular good old people. Dark alley at 3:00 a.m., no problem here. A little shaky, but thank you very much for the recognition, and it's a good feeling to have after the day-to-day. So, thank you very much.
On behalf of Chief Kerlowitz, in keeping with tradition here, you both get presented with 2018 Officer of the Quarter handcuffs. Please wear out the warranty on these.
Got it.
All right. Congratulations, guys.
Congratulations to our awardees, Mario Chavez and Michael Buena. And thank you for a job well done. Thank you, Chief Kerlowitz, for your fine officers and being a leader for them and bringing them to these heights. Thank you. Our next presentation is recognition of the Moreno Valley Police Department Reserve Officer Eric Wolf on his retirement, or letting him go. And this presentation will be presented by our councilmember Cabrera. And if we can please have Assistant Sheriff Clary come up for a special presentation.
Good evening once again. And we do want to recognize, we want to continue to recognize our public safety officers here with our police department. And right here to my left, we have Volunteer Reserve Officer Eric Wolf, who is retiring. Like Mayor Protembaka said, we're letting him go. I'm not sure if he wants to go, but he's going. So, tonight, we have him, and it's a treasure. It's a treasure to have people, men and women like him, who are serving our communities, communities all around the state and the country as well. They're the guardian angels that you have here in the City of Moreno Valley that give their time. They sacrifice their personal time with their families and their friends, enjoying the fruits of their labor to go out there and protect all of us that are here in this room. And that's why we're recognizing him tonight. And Reserve Officer Eric Wolf has spent the last, get this, 24 years volunteering at events and during times of crisis. He has volunteered over 6,000 hours of his personal time to help keep our citizens safe and make our events run smoothly. Officer Wolf, on behalf of the City Council, please accept this certificate of recognition and our deepest gratitude.
First, I've got to thank Chief Kerlowitz, who as a reserve deputy introduced me to the reserve program. And now, I get to leave under your leadership. What a privilege. And to all the fine deputies of the City of Moreno Valley and its leadership. Council, thank you also for this presentation, and of course, my family. You guys are awesome for having permitted this all the years. Blessings to you. Thank you.
Good evening, City Council. Thank you for inviting us here tonight. I appreciate it. City executives, thank you also. I'm Joe Clary. I'm currently Assistant Sheriff over all the field operations of the County of Riverside for the Sheriff's Department. And tonight's a very special opportunity for us because quite frankly, we don't have an awful lot of reserves that actually retire with the years of service that Eric has provided. And reserves are special. You talked about volunteering and stuff like that, but what you are losing is a fully-trained police officer who has done his service to the community, his selfless service to the community at no pay, entirely because he is committed to the needs of the police service, committed to his community. He's a longtime resident of the City of Moreno Valley. I first met him probably about 1995 when I came back here as a supervisor and continued to work in the City of Moreno Valley. He's been here a long time. He has provided a huge amount of service to the city and supported your police department because he had a desire. He had a calling, wasn't a job. This truly was a calling for him. He had a job, and he came here and he did this, and he served us, served you for 24 years because he loved it. Law enforcement has a lot of capstones, and I mentioned he's a fully-trained policeman. Reserves have to go through all the same training, so there's a lot of capstones in law enforcement. One, getting hired, finishing the academy, promotions. The end of it is their hope and desire to honorably retire. And tonight, the recognition of that honorable retirement as a member of the Riverside County Sheriff's Department and the Moreno Valley Police Department, he gets his retirement badge. And on behalf of the City of Moreno Valley and the Sheriff from the County of Riverside, Stan Sniff, congratulations on all. Beautiful career.
I'll make this very short and sweet. Eric and I go way back. I don't think I'd be the man I am without his friendship in my life. I'm honored to be able to call him a friend. "On behalf of the Riverside County Sheriff's Department, the Moreno Valley Police Department, with great honor and recognition for your loyal and dedicated service to the Sheriff's Department and the Moreno Valley Police Station, in sincere gratitude for the compassion, guidance, and outstanding leadership you've provided, Reserve Officer Eric Wolf."
And can we get the rest of the officers, if you'd like to join us here up at the front as well?
Let's give Officer Wolf another round of applause in appreciation. I can have Steve Fries? Yeah. We're going to have Animal Services. Bring everyone up. Okay. Well, we'll get scattered and then we'll be posed for the picture later on. So, our final presentation is in recognition of the endless hard work performed by the staff and volunteers at the Moreno Valley Animal Shelter. The City Council of the City of Moreno Valley has issued a proclamation recognizing November 4th through the 10th as National Animal Shelter and Rescue Appreciation Week, even though we appreciate you 24/7, all year round. Animal Services Division staff exceed expectations to find forever homes for pets. In 2017 alone, their efforts brought about positive outcomes for 4,469 animals. I have six of them. This was done by working to host discount adoption clinics, partnering with community stakeholders to enhance the care of the animals at the shelter, and volunteering to raise awareness of the many services offered by the animal shelter. And so, the City Council of the City of Moreno Valley hereby issues this proclamation. Whereas the Moreno Valley Animal Shelter works closely with its rescue group partners and net workers to provide important services such as affordable vaccinations and microchipping services each and every day. And whereas the collective commitment shown by the Moreno Valley Animal Shelter staff, rescue group partners, and net workers has made tremendous strides in achieving the City Council's goal to significantly increase placement of homeless pets. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Moreno Valley, on behalf of its citizens and staff, does hereby proclaim November 4th through the 10th as National Animal Shelter and Rescue Appreciation Week. And calls upon all citizens to recommit to the animals in our community with responsible pet ownership and support of efforts to help protect homeless animals throughout the City of Moreno Valley. Here tonight to accept the proclamation is Animal Services Division Manager Steve Fries and his wonderful staff. He couldn't be wonderful without them. Steve, would you care to say a few words?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mayor Protembaka. I think one of the things that is echoed is that we do have a great staff. Been in the business for 34 years, and this is one of the best teams that I've been able to work with. They do a great job. They're out there to assist the community, the residents with their pets, and of course, our pets that come in that are lost and homeless, and do a great job of all finding them great homes. So, thank you for all the work that you do. I really appreciate it. One of the things, too, that we want to remind people, and this is one of the things that Mayor Protembaka often will tell people, is that please adopt, don't shop. Please come to our animal shelter. We always have opportunities available for people that are seeking a new pet for their home. We always have those opportunities. We're never a loss of any dog or cat that needs a good home. So, please... So, please come and visit our facility. It's a great facility. Our staff does a great job and we're there to serve the community. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much and I just want to say that I appreciate all of you. I know you work very hard and take care of all those dogs, cats, puppies, kittens. So, another round of applause to our Animal Service Division for all the work they do. This concludes our special presentations and the City Council meeting will reconvene in about 10 minutes.
Good evening and welcome to the joint meeting of the City Council of the City of Moreno Valley, Moreno Valley Community Services District, City as successor agency for the Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Moreno Valley, Moreno Valley Housing Authority, and the Board of Library Trustees. The City Council receives a separate stipend for CSD meetings. I now call this meeting to order on October 16th, 2018 at 6:24 PM, 6:23 PM. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Frank Wright. Please remain standing for the invocation which will be given by Pastor Troy Shadid from Generations Church.
Shall we face the flag and honor the colors in repetition? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Let's pray. Father God, we just thank you for the city of Moreno Valley. We thank you for the City Council. Lord, all the leaders that you've placed in these positions, that they make wise decisions over our city. Lord, just give them direction and wisdom tonight in all the decisions they make. We thank you for your protection over the police department, fire department, over our city. Father God, we pray for our schools and just peace in the city of Moreno Valley. Father, we just thank you in Jesus' name for all the City Council. Just ask you to bless them and their families in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you Pastor Troy from Generations Church for coming by and giving us the invocation. Thank you. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Gaiba.
I'm here.
Councilmember Marquez.
Here.
Councilmember Cabrera.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tembaca.
Here.
Mayor Gutierrez.
Here. Staff introductions, please.
Pat Jacquez Nares, City Clerk.
Angel Miguel, Executive Assistant to the Mayor and City Council.
Marshall Ironman, Chief Financial Officer, City Treasurer.
Martin Kuzanowicz, City Attorney.
Tom DeSantis, City Manager.
Alan Brock, Assistant City Manager.
Mike Lee, Economy Development Director.
Rick Sandsamire, Community Development Director.
Lieutenant Tyler Clark, here on behalf of Chief David Kirlovitz.
Up to Alarm at Fire Chief.
Kathleen Sanchez, Director of Human Resources.
Patty Solano, Parks and Community Services Director.
Michael Wolfe, Director of Public Works, City Engineer.
Thank you and thank you to everyone that's here today. Thank you to the staff for all of your hard work each and every day as well. Just a friendly reminder that we also offer Spanish translation services in the back. So, if anyone is interested with this feature, the devices can be checked out. Before we hear public comments this evening, I ask and encourage everyone participating to keep their comments respectful towards others, especially towards the individuals at the podium speaking. I embrace and support the First Amendment right to free speech, including everyone's right to speak at this meeting and share his or her views about the issues concerning our city. Finally, I ask the speakers bear in mind that comments are limited to three minutes for each speaker and that you refrain from duplicating comments already made by others other than to note that you agree with the comment. Public comments on matters on the agenda will be taken up as the item is called for business between staff's report and City Council deliberation. Those wishing to speak on any subject not on the agenda under the jurisdiction of the City Council may speak now. So, if there's anything that you would like to speak on that's not on the agenda, this would be the opportunity to speak on that. Those wishing to speak should complete and submit a blue speaker slip to the bailiff. There's a three-minute time limit per person. All remarks and questions shall be addressed to the presiding officer, which is myself, or to the City Council. The City Clerk will call three names at a time. Please move to the front of the room when you hear your name called. In order to preserve the meeting decorum, council and staff will not respond during public comments. Any council comments or questions to staff will be addressed during the council closing comments. Madam Clerk, how many speakers for non-agenda items?
Nine so far.
Okay. Go ahead and call the first three.
Adolf Kruger. John Lindsay. Adriana Kingston.
Hello, my name is Adolf Kruger. I've lived in the city, well, before it was a city, since March 1st, 1972. And I know you, no one here is gonna like what I have to say, okay? I've tried to talk to people over and over, this first time again in about eight years that I've come here. Since then, I've gone through three criminal trials because of corruption in the city, the police department, just everyone, all those 46 years. Before it was, okay, Moreno Valley Police was the Riverside County Sheriff. And all they are is a bunch of corrupt and I will not finish that, okay? I have tried to get help from anyone here, nothing. I have gone everywhere trying to get help. I'm a senior citizen. I know you may not believe it, I'm 78 years old now, I'll be 79 December 25. And all I can say, this, this city and the whole country is sick. And I mean sick in the head. You don't believe me? I, I know you're laughing, okay, people are laughing, fine. If you want to know the truth, then read President Herbert Hoover's book, Freedom Betrayed and you'll find out how corrupt everything is in this country. And yeah, between, okay, the list here, of the 20th century's worst criminals. Franklin Roosevelt, Winston Churchill, Harry Truman, Stalin, Catholic Pope Louis II, Mao Zedong, Lenin, and it is American Jewish Zionists. That's how they betrayed and sold a billion people into Russian communist slavery. I know because I was one of them. I spent over five years in the Russian concentration camp until October 30th, 1949. I turned 10, two and a half months later, I mean, a month and a half later. Anyway, the Jewish Zionists, all the Holocaust knowledge, bunch of lies. That's, they brought that, you know, did that so they could get Israel on their own. And now they're just, ever since they got it in 45, they have been murdering the Palestinians every year, over and over again. And I, I haven't been there, but I know people that have gone there and have witnessed it. And the Holocaust, nothing, bunch of lies. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Kruger. Okay, next speaker is John Linsley.
Good evening, Council. Mayor Gutierrez, Mayor Pro Tembaca, and the rest of the council members, city staff.
You can speak more into the microphone.
This, this microphone? Okay. City staff and residents and other guests. My, my name is John Linsley. I live at 9785 Shadow Mountain Drive, just above the Shadow Mountain Park in the northwest corner of Moreno Valley. I've, I'm a short-term residence here, resident here. I've only been here three years, but my wife has been a resident and her family have been residents here for many years. And she attracted me to this wonderful city. I've enjoyed my three years so far and I, I just kind of first wanted to give thanks to the Council for all that you've done in devoting your time and your services to this community. You, Mayor Gutierrez, the leadership that you've given our city, I, I appreciate that. And I want to give a, a special thanks to, to Councilman Gaiba. I've just had the opportunity to meet him last weekend and have conversation with him, but I've watched him and I've watched the rest of your council members having to deal with the issues of this city and I, I commend you for what you've done. And I do, I ask the Lord's blessing on you as council members standing now and on the city staff also, but also for those in the upcoming election that may take seats on either the council or be appointed to staff positions. I just ask the Lord, keep guiding this city through its, through its leadership. This is my first appearance before the Council and it stems from a neighborhood meeting that we had in the, in the Shadow Mountain Park last weekend where some issues were brought up. The primary issue that we were dealing with was a, a new development that went in kind of to all of our surprise. We hadn't been informed on it and, but the, the focus of the meeting was now we all of a sudden have an impact of boroughs all over our, our yards and our neighborhoods because they've taken away, first of all, the borough grazing land and second of all, the thoroughfare for the boroughs to reach other grazing lands. And we were concerned about seeing mitigation put in, some sort of corridors put in because the boroughs were here first and they're gonna be there and we can't wean. The neighborhood can't continue abiding with some of the damages that's occurring. The boroughs have now figured out they can tip over trash cans and eat the garbage within. The results of that is the sicknesses in their deposits all over our neighborhood and that, that doesn't work. We, we need to do something about that. So, if there's any way that we can address the developer to consider that at least in this development, but also in future developments when they're taking up the lands that the boroughs have been used to.
Thank you, Mr. Lins. Thank you. And what we'll have is a staff, someone from our staff, reach out to you.
Okay.
If you can leave your contact information and maybe Angel, if you can just connect with him, so he can reach out to you, okay? And find out more information. Thank you. Next speaker is Adriana Kingston, Shoredany, and Donovan Siddique.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council Members. Imagine it's 3:00 PM, the school bell rings and kids all over the city of Moreno Valley are dismissed for the day. But where do these children go? Many hard-working parents still lack the means to pay for after-school programs and some kids have no one at home to supervise them. I'm Adriana Kingston, General Manager at Think Together, your partner in providing after-school programs to the schools within your city and a nonprofit organization. We are dedicated to bringing these, within your, these after-school programs and other expanded learning opportunities to Moreno Valley and parts of Paris. Think Together not only provides a safe place for children to go after school, but also provides homework help and academic support, healthy snacks, physical activity, sports programs, and opportunities to explore new subjects like visual and performing arts, robotics, and coding. We see every day how families depend on state funds and state-funded after-school programs which are supported by California's After School Education and Safety Program, or ACES for short. But lawmakers in Sacramento question the value of after-school programs as ACES continues to be underfunded. On October 25th, that's next Thursday, next week Thursday, we will be a part of a nationwide celebration called Lights On After School to showcase the important role after-school programs play in the lives of children, families, and the communities in which we serve. We are leading the fight to a secure, sustainable statewide funding solution for after-school programs and our Lights On After School event will bring greater awareness to our collective cause to ensure that the children of Moreno Valley and all over California have access to high-quality and well-funded after-school programs. I would like to cordially invite each of you to experience the power of after-school by attending our Think Together Lights On After School event on October 25th from 4:00 to 6:00 PM hosted at both Edgemont Elementary in Moreno Valley Unified and Triple Crown Elementary in Valverde Unified. We encourage you to come and meet the children, parents, staff, and community members whose lives are impacted by after-school programs. Thank you for your time and we hope to see you at Edgemont and Triple Crown Elementary Schools next week, October 25th. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kingston. And thank you for what you do with Think Together. You do an amazing job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council and fellow community members. I'm Shoredany and I'm here to talk about kindness. What a concept. So, we have worked together, Community Now and other organizations within our city and the Inland Empire, and we've come up with an Inland Empire Kindness Campaign and we made an alliance. And we have a few things that we're doing and I know that you council members have been emailed separately about this, but one of the things that we're doing to start awareness of being kind, and when I mean kind, I mean, everyone knows that kindness increases mental wellness. Kindness increases the value of our communities. It reduces crime, it reduces violence, just having kindness in our communities. So, one of the first things I'd like to do is thank every one of you for participating in the events that we've had going on through the year, the backpack giveaway and different things like that, and asked you to participate in the flash mob. We're doing October 20th and what we're doing is we're creating signs that say kind things and we're posting on different areas in our city and we're just flashing for 15 minutes to show the importance of kindness. This is just to get our community members aware that we are looking for kindness in our community and we'd love for the Council to be a part of that to show that our city, it wants to be a kind city. Along those lines, we're doing a couple of other projects. We are doing gardens. I know there's been a lot of talk about community gardens. We're now collaborating with members in our community and getting those gardens up as well as working with Moreno Valley Unified School District to work on those lines to get gardens at the schools that are already existing, to get those planted and that food dispersed. And we're also working on a project with your Arts Commission. We're asking for signage around the city. What about if people came into Moreno Valley and there were signs that said, "Welcome to Moreno Valley, one of the kind cities," or "Thank you for coming to our city," or "It's a great day," or "You're awesome," or just positive signage around our city, including murals that we can use to help our city concentrate and think of kindness. Last thing, I'm asking that you guys do a resolution for kindness, that we can be a kind city so that we can work on that and help bring down mental stress in our world and to just improve our city. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tenny.
If any of you guys are interested, I have flyers over here on how to get involved with the Kindness Campaign and Alliance. So, thank you.
Thank you for the kind words.
Okay. Good evening, Council, City of Moreno Valley, the staff, the hard-working staff over there. I want to give another shout-out to the animal shelter people. They do a great job. We've still got a long way to go. Still a lot of animals being put down there. It's a shame, but I've got three of them myself, so if you're looking for an animal, the animal shelter is the way to go. I went back into the history of how many times I've been up here asking for this very simple, simple task. I've sent emails to a lot of you. Some of you guys delete my emails and you do what you do. Adrian Mitchell Park needs a bathroom. It is a highly-used park. Now, I'm sorry, a lot of you guys are saying, "Where's Adrian Mitchell Park?" It's right across the street over there. Not far from the golf course. Now, it's a highly-used park that when people are over there practicing for soccer and whatever they're doing, since there is no bathroom there, they are taking the liberty and using the bathroom against the, the forcated walls and whatever. Now, with all the money we spent on all this stuff, I think asking for a porta potty, if you guys can do that, is, is that too much to ask for, for, you know, human dignity over there? I live in that area. I think it's something that we need to address. It is a park that has the first military female soldier killed in the city's history and I think it deserves a bathroom. And I'm willing to settle for a porta potty. I mean, is that too much? Now, we're in silly season and I'm asking the public to look at the 460s. Tonight, we are talking about cannabis all over our city. And I want you to look at those 460s and look at a mayor who has donations from the cannabis interests and think about his vote tonight or whatever he's gonna do. So, look at those 460s. You want to know what's going on with your representative, that's gonna tell you a lot. But tonight, we're, we're doing something on cannabis and it's gonna be interesting. I filed a complaint with the district attorney last week and you guys know I'm the Inland Empire informer. I'll let you know what's going on here. It's all about public records and the city clerk has records that I'm still waiting for and I'll be in there tomorrow to get them. I filed a complaint with the DA in regards to the skate park and the amphitheater. It is obvious that a Brown Act violation has taken place and/or some kind of shenanigans is going on. And the public would like to know what's it about? And the public would like to know what's it about? The, uh, staff, one of the staff members had admitted, "Yeah, you guys jumped the gun", which goes against the state, uh, or at least the city municipal code. If it's against the city municipal code, why would you guys move forward with a groundbreaking ceremony if you guys know you jumped the gun? That doesn't make any sense. And I think it's illegal. So some of you guys are gonna go to jail.
The next, uh, three speakers is Jose Chavez, Jorge Quintero and Joshua Nigar.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council and Staff Members. Well, I have 33 years living in Moreno Valley. I remember when this city is a small town, no one say we are in budget. Now, we do have a lot of warehouses. They receive a lot of more income. They receive a lot of more taxes for the properties, all kind of money they come over to the city. Now, my question is this one, what the money is going to do right now, I ever saw it. I live in my house for 33 years. I was requesting so many times to reface the street as all damaged all over. But like the first gentleman talking about, we have a lot of problem in the whole county. Be honest with you. I might have to start to sweeping everyone. Don't get surprised when someone else knock your door and get you in pajamas or something outside. Okay? I'll be honest, I'm not messing around. You know it. It's already happened two times. And listen, Barry said you guys have a two, two, uh, city managers when the one is enough to do the job. We do have a chief of the police when he has, when he has assistant, he has a, a secretary. And I was requesting to speak with him like, uh, like, uh, three months or four months ago. I never get any result, yes or no. And I went over to there and there, I was asking, "Please, give me the answer, one yes or one no"? That's it. Sample. I was requesting to you, Mr. Gutierrez. Long time ago, I leave a message with your secretary. Have you ever been calling me back again? Keep in mind, when I want to speak with you guys, it's before. The bump is gonna be explosion. But you guys, I never, never thinking about it. Are we too personal? You know the way I acting. You, you might guys know it. So, and don't get surprised. I got knocking the right bell at the right time and right spot. Keep in mind, I, my patience is over. They send me an envelope to collect signatures. I pay my taxes, my taxes on time. I ever receive a second notice to pay my taxes? I ever been say it, I am in budget? No. I pay my taxes in time. Where my money go? What happened with those streets that I need to have a refacer? They asked me to collect, it's not my job. I not work for the city. I am disabled person. I believe the whole county is a lot of corruption. Sexual abusing, discrimination are all over.
Chavez, thank you. Okay, next, uh, three speakers is Jorge Quintero, Rafael Brugueras and Sean Fortine.
Buenas noches, uh, Mayor Gutierrez.
Good evening, Mayor Gutierrez.
Concejales.
Uh, members of the council.
Miembro del staff.
Members of the staff.
Y público.
And the public.
Ahorita es una época de elecciones. Hay muchos que están corriendo para diferentes posiciones.
Right now, it's, uh, uh, there are new positions that are running for office.
Yo se que muchos incluyen en su agenda la educación, que es como una priori, que no es una, pero no lo hacen como una prioridad, que debe ser.
I know you list education as one of your priorities, but it's not, when it is, it's not a priority.
No, no veo mucho de aquí de ustedes que tengan mucho interés o que tengan alguna interés en mejorar la educación aquí de Moreno Valley.
I don't see you guys making an effort to improve the education of Moreno Valley.
Hay acuerdos que han, que han hecho ustedes, pero a veces nada más me parece que es para la foto más que para progresar en lo académico de los estudiantes.
I, you have made some agreements, but, and I do see you guys taking photos, but I don't see any improvements in education.
Moreno Valley tiene dos distritos, el distrito de Moreno Valley y el distrito de Valverde.
Uh, Moreno Valley has two districts, uh, Moreno Valley District and Valverde District?
Es sorprendente cómo el distrito de Valverde teniendo menos recursos está mucho mejor que el distrito de Moreno Valley.
But it's surprising that the Valverde District, even though it has less resources, it's better than the Moreno Valley District?
Es un ridículo que se gradúen a los jóvenes, más del 90%.
It is a shame that, uh, 90% of the students are graduating.
Y el 20% únicamente están, reúnen los requisitos mínimos para entrar al colegio.
And only 20% of the students are, are have the minimum requires to go to college?
Es un ridículo para una ciudad moderna que quiere progresar.
It is a shame for a modern city, city that wants to make progress.
Yo creo que una de las prioridades también, aparte del empleo, la seguridad, la educación es muy importante porque ese es el futuro de nuestra ciudad y nuestros jóvenes, de nuestra comunidad.
Besides security, uh, our education of the future is very important and is very important for the community.
Pero no veo que, que el distrito quiera hacer algo para mejorar. Sí, es para tomarse la foto, decir que solamente un, un estudiante se, este, estuvo las mejores calificaciones y ganó un premio en Washington y la verdad es que él, como digo, ni él.
I do, I do see that, uh, I don't see the district making, um, much progress. Yes, I do see that one of the students have, uh, graduated, got an award from, uh, from Washington, but that's just one student.
Porque representa, no, no representan ni el punto 001%.
But that, but that's not even that 001%.
Da mucha tristeza porque nuestros jóvenes están listos para trabajar de barrenderos o limpiar mesas o trabajar en las, en las, en las bodegas.
It is a shame that our students will be either cleaning tables, uh, working in a warehouse or doing something like that.
Si aquí se establece una compañía importante que quiera tener gente capacitada, no lo va a tener aquí en Moreno Valley.
Uh, I don't see the, them having the ability or the, of the, uh, resources, uh, educational resources to, to get jobs.
Como dicen, hay mucha corrupción entre los miembros del board de Moreno Valley.
I, I see there's a lot of corruption with the members of the board in Moreno Valley.
Es un ridículo que un señor, como es el señor Allgin, miembro del board, vicepresidente de, del board.
I, I see, uh, some members of the board like, uh, señor Allgin, uh, he's part of the, the board, the board.
Tiene casi 20 años de miembro del board.
He's been in the board for almost 20 years.
Y no ha habido una mejora real en los estudiantes.
And I haven't seen any, any improvement in, in the students.
También tenemos nosotros la medida M que estamos pagando todos los que tenemos una, una casa o que tiene un negocio y vemos que también no, no son transparentes en, en la medida M.
Also regarding, uh, uh, measure M, uh, we as taxpayers pay our dues, uh, but we don't see any improvements with measure M.
Mucha gente de aquí ni sabe que está pagando la medida M.
A lot of people here do not know what measure M is paying.
Pero no, no han sido transparentes y no ha sido para mejorar la educación porque no ha habido resultados.
And, uh, but it's not transparent and we don't see any improvement in education.
Yo sí le pido a los candidatos que lo tomen como una cosa seria, como un compromiso que tienen que establecer.
I ask you, the new members that are running for new seats, to take it seriously.
Tenemos mucha gente que se gradúa de las uni, de los colegios, de las universidades, pero no tiene trabajo.
There's a lot of people that have graduated from college or community college, but they don't have a job.
Pero aquí tenemos muchos estudiantes que necesitan la enseñanza de, de esa gente y no la tienen.
And there's a lot of students here, they need, uh, the experience from the people, but they're on, they're not, they're not working.
Entonces sí, pues comprométanse con la educación, por favor.
I want you to make a pledge to education.
Porque eso es lo único que nos va a sacar adelante a esta ciudad.
Because that's, that will make us move forward in the city.
La, la ciudad es moderna, pero no, 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 no se nivela con la educación.
It, this is a modern city, but education is lacking.
Entonces sí hay que mejorar en eso.
So we, we want, we need to improve on that.
Gracias.
Thank you. Thank you. Next three speakers is Rafael Brugueras, Sean Fortine and Bob Palomares.
Good evening, Mayor, Council Members, Staff, Residents and Guests. To the last speaker, talking about education, that's something that has to do with the school board. Because I know the mayor in this city is doing his very, very best to have programs for every student in the city of Moreno Valley, because I'm part of that committee. Okay? And I see what comes in through the committee, okay? And we don't slack. We give. We give to a lot of people. We have programs, college programs. If you graduate, you can go to college for free and we get you a job. Blame the school board for not educating our kids through logistics in the 11th grade and 12th grade. They're the ones we should be blaming, not here. This is a different government and everybody knows that and you should know that by now. Don't blame the mayor for nothing. It is not him. It is them. So vote them out. Moreno Valley resident, you have an opportunity to vote them out this year. If you don't like them, vote them out. Okay, go back to the real good stuff. Moreno Valley's growing, Mayor. There's construction in every corner of our city. We're improving the roads. Yes, we wish we had $175 million to do the whole city, but we don't. We only get what we get from the state and we use it wisely to do the most with our streets. One day, we'll get to the other streets, but we did the worst ones first, okay? We have businesses that are growing on Day Street. It has changed completely. We have brand new houses being built throughout the city. We have schools. We have apartments, okay? We have a lot of new neighbors that are living in Moreno Valley that are grateful to be living in Moreno Valley because they can, they can afford to buy a house in the city of Moreno Valley, okay? We're doing a lot in the city of Moreno Valley. So don't blame the mayor. He's doing his damn best. Blame somebody else, okay? It's not right to be blaming the mayor for the things that go wrong. Maybe some of it is our fault that we don't try hard enough out there. And, and fight the school board. Use your tax dollar. Use your voice like I'm doing. Raise it a little bit. Don't be afraid to raise it and let them know that they're going wrong. Vote them out. You have the opportunity to vote out those men and women who do not do you justice. If you don't do that this year, do, please don't come back in here complaining. Because we're doing our part in the city of Moreno Valley. The staff is doing their part. That number, if you live in the city of Moreno Valley, you know, because it's not a lie, you know that something's being done. You see the buildings, you see the road, you see the businesses. You cannot hide from that because you gotta go shopping. You see what's going on in the city of Moreno Valley and it's doing its very best in a modern time.
Thank you, Rafael.
Hi, I'd kind of like to keep this quick. First off, um, just to avoid any possible confusions about, uh, any possible Brown Act issues with the, the way the videos are recorded, I suggest that the city, um, runs the videos, runs the cameras through the breaks from a few minutes before to a few minutes after with, and show everything in between, no matter what happens. Um, this would particularly benefit you, Mayor Gutierrez. Second is, it would be nice if someone, uh, in this room could explain, uh, on social media which ones are personal campaign pages and which ones are official city pages, uh, to clear up which ones, uh, are not supposed to be used for campaigning during city, uh, time and out of the city's pocket, which ones should not be used for campaigning at all. And then, um, the third is, I would like to address, uh, some conduct that's been happening like for, um, as long as I've ever been coming, about people turning around and yelling insults or belittling the people behind them. Like you, they're always being negative, they're always this, that, that, um, that's called gaslighting. It's a form of emotional abuse that's intended to, uh, uh, break someone's self-confidence and get them to do whatever the person yelling the insults, uh, wants. And quite frankly, it's not, uh, appropriate for, um, in, in a venue like this which is supposed to be for, um, intelligent, educated, um, thought out, um, discussions. So, um, it would be nice if sometimes, if, uh, if the officers here were a little bit quicker to, uh, kick some people out and also it would be nice if you were a little more, um, willing to let them at times. So, thanks.
Next three speakers is Bob Palomares, Jason Hunter and Luis Palomares.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, Council Members.
Good evening, Bob.
Uh, I was reading in the Press Enterprise, October 5th, uh, Mr. Christopher Thornburg, the economist, talking about how Moreno Valley has boomed. And, uh, there's a lot of people, well, you know, I heard Donovan say about, uh, look at the 460s. Well, why don't you look at each council member and see what they've accomplished in the years? You know, I know it's politic time, but, uh, there have been mentions of, you know, let's, we need six council members. I don't know why. I mean, we've got three council members that have been pulling the weight. The other two have been complaining, playing politics. And you know, people don't like it, but hey, that's the way it is. I mean, look at the record. Moreno Valley has been on the move for the last several years. I mean, like it's never been? That's the truth. I mean, I've seen where the staff is really going at it. Mr. Christopher Thornburg said Mike Lee's done an incredible job and he has, along with the staff. So, you know, look at the individuals. I went to one of the, uh, forums that they had for everybody that's running for office and I was very impressed by Cabrera. Because when they were talking about the homeless, he had, I think, the closest thing to, you know, there's no surefire way to solve the problem completely, but he had his tentacles out for every individual. For the homeless that want to work, for the ones that are on drugs, uh, for the ones that got mental illness. You know, because it's, one size doesn't fit all. It's gonna take a lot and it's gonna cost some money. But you gotta get it done now before it gets worse and it is gonna get worse. I don't know if the fella that got caught at the Rio Rancho Indoor Swamp Meet was homeless, but obviously I think they kind of said he has mental illness because they took him somewhere else, you know? And that's what's gonna be happening. So we really need to look at the issues that really affect us and stop playing politics. You know, that's why I can appreciate, and I'll be honest, the three in the middle. And I respect the other two, but let's get some work done. Thank you.
Next three speakers, please.
Good evening.
Good evening, Jason Hunter. I'm here to beat a dead horse to some extent. I'm here to talk again about the topic of the possible lack of appropriations authority by the city manager before spending public funds on the skate park and amphitheater. Now, in the last two weeks, I've received documents from the clerk, just yesterday actually, in response to a public records request I made. It was 37 pages long. Quite honestly, I haven't had the chance to really dive deep into it yet. I've, I've looked at it, kind of scanned it. I've also had a nice back and forth with the city manager via email during this time. So here, what are my preliminary findings, right? I looked at Resolution 2008-88 and it says the city manager is hereby authorized to approve new appropriations provided there are new offsetting revenues to be recognized and with no net budgetary impact. Now, I haven't taken a look at a deep dive into the CIP yet, that's the Capital Improvement Project, uh, document to determine whether it's a planning or a budgetary document, but I will soon enough. I'll get to it soon enough. And so I'll get a better feel for how that all plays out. But I, here's what I, I, I don't think that means. I don't think the city manager and I agree on what the meaning of those words are. That's what I think's gonna happen here. I don't think the city manager has the ability, at least what I've seen so far, to just add new projects into the CIP without council direction in an openly public meeting. I just don't see it. And, and his email response to me, what I found was a little bit alarming, was that he said, "Well, you know, Jason, this is what we did in Riverside when I was at Riverside." And my response to that is, if you haven't been following what's been going on at, at Riverside at an executive level is the community has thrown all those people out. Not only have we thrown all the executives out, we've thrown all their handpicked successors out. So if you were doing it in Riverside, my guess is this is either abuse- So if you were doing it in Riverside, my guess is this is either abusive policy or it's just plain bad policy, in which case it falls back on the council. So I think this needs to be fixed because, once again, it's a matter of public concern that the business of the public be conducted openly and everybody be able to see how the public's money is being spent and what kind of priorities should be sent by this, on spending should be sent by this council. Under, from what I can tell, the city manager's, you know, logic and reasoning is, is that as long as he's got new money showing up in the budget, he could go around and buy fur coats for everybody on staff, as long as it was under $75,000 a pop. And that makes no sense to me whatsoever. And it shouldn't make sense to anybody up there or anybody in this room. So either we have an abusive policy or we have bad policy. It falls on either over here or up there and it can be fixed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Here we come again, Mr. Hunt over here, the hired gun from Riverside. Their city's in a shambles over there too. I don't know what he's doing over here talking about ours. We're in good shape and we're getting better and better. It's not gonna happen overnight. Rome wasn't built in a day. And these people come over here, I like to see them all in those seats, Sadiq and all these naysayers bashing. I agree with him about the bathroom. Great, let's do it. You know, let's make that, get that going. But everything else is, you know, a bunch of lies. And it just turns my stomach when you got this Hunter guy coming over here telling us how to run our show here, how to run the city here. He's wrong. He don't even know what he's talking about. Just a lot of propaganda. He's politicking. He's lying. You know, and then he said he didn't read the whole thing and he dived into some and all. Come on, well, why are you here? Read the whole thing, you're so interested. You want something to happen? Read it all then, Mr. Know-It-All. Wow. And as far as our schools, you know, this is the city council, we're not the school board. You know, we're having problems across, not in this, just in this district, across the nation, across the nation. Golly, we're in bad shape and it all starts, it all comes and not starts. I mean, all the way from the White House, we're having problems. Every city, every county, you know, every state, all over, across the country. So, I mean, come on. They expect you to, we're not Jesus here. We can't work miracles. It's a long time coming. You know, the ones that were on these seats before, man, they kept us at a standstill for the longest time. We've been going forward these last years, the last five years, we've been going forward and there's a lot still to come. It's not gonna happen, like I said, overnight, but it's happening. It's happening and I'm glad it's happening. So saying all that, as far as the spin doctor here, he's as bad as Fox News, Mr. Hunter. Go back to your own city. Go talk to your people in your city and your council.
Quiet, please.
You know, this is what the, who somebody was talking about, you know, when somebody's up here talking and they do this to distract you. Can I have some seconds back? Golly. You know, these are the naysayers, the liars, the ones that want to keep our city at a standstill, the ones that want to turn it back five years. This is, I mean, we're going forward. We're running with the ball. Let's go forward. And don't believe all the propaganda, the politics and the lies. Our staff's doing a good job. And for people to come over here and say they're not doing this and our mayor's not doing that and our council not doing that, I don't agree with everything Marcus and Guyva do, but I agree with some things, but not a lot of things because they hold up the show here. You know, we're not in Congress. Does it take an act of Congress to do something? The staff's making it happen. You know, but we got the two in the end, Guyva and Marcus, it's an act of Congress to make anything happen.
Thank you, Luis. Thank you. Okay. We're gonna go ahead and move forward to our consent calendar. However, before that, would any council members like to make the reports and comments at this time instead of their closing comments? Seeing none, we are now going to move to our joint consent calendar, sections A through D on the agenda. All items listed under the consent calendar, sections A, B, C, and D are considered to be routine and non-controversial and may be enacted by one motion unless a member of the council would like an item pulled or for discussion. Items withdrawn for report or discussion will be heard after public hearing items. Each action is a separate action for the Community Services District, City Successory Agency, Community Redevelopment Agency, Housing Authority, or the Board of Library Trustees. Go ahead and, if there's any requests, go ahead and push your requests. Madam Clerk, is there any public comments on the consent calendar?
Yes, Rafael Burguerras.
Okay, which item?
B5 and B6.
Okay, B5 and B6. Okay?
Good evening, once again, Mayor, council members, staff, residents, and guests that come from a long ways. I like B5 is because MPLC, Legacy 75 Associates, that purchased 53 acres are keeping their promise, working with the staff to build the park. See, there are good things that come to this city when the staff works together with the developers. They don't all get things for free. They give a little so we can have a little, so our kids can have a place to run. But I'm hoping that when they build this park, they have a bathroom so we don't have that argument in the future, okay? For sure. Let's get that bathroom in there. Okay? Okay, so I'm glad for that. B5, B6 is my favorite. This is the committee that I'm in right now. The parks, the trails, and the committee service. The soaring book that goes out quarterly tells the history of what we're doing in the city of Moreno Valley. Everybody that lives in the city of Moreno, everybody that has a mailbox in the city of Moreno Valley and a P.O. box gets this magazine, okay? And they have an opportunity to look at it and find something to do in the city of Moreno Valley. There's hundreds of things to do. There are many programs that a parent can take their child for free or for the least amount of money, for four weeks, to see if they like it, instead of spending hundreds of dollars and thousands and winding up that they don't like it and they lose all that money. Moreno Valley has done a lot of things for the residents, especially for the parents, so they have a place for their child to go to. That's why we have the rec in the senior center right here, next to City Hall. It's full of kids. I go there once a month for my meeting and I see kids in there having fun. So when people say we don't have things to do, they're not telling you the truth because we have evidence. And everybody in this room knows it, that lives in the city of Moreno Valley, they get a booklet quarterly to see the activities way in advance, way in advance, so you can put it in your calendar and be part of Moreno Valley. But people choose not to and that's the given right. But please, don't come up here and say that we don't do nothing, we don't have education, we don't have programs, we don't help nobody, because that is a true, true lie. Okay? Now, if there's something there that you don't see, come to the committee. Take your three minutes and tell us what you'd like to see done, but don't come in here and lie.
Okay. Thank you, Rafael. All right. Any other public comments, Madam Clerk?
None.
No? Okay. I'll entertain a motion by council to approve the consent calendar, a motion by Councilwoman Marquez. Any second?
Yes, second.
Okay, second by Mayor Potem Baca. Okay, go ahead and, once it comes up. And it's approved. Which leads us to our public hearings. And this is a golden rod speaker slip. So the public hearing for the national, which is E1, public hearing for one National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System ballot proceeding, will have a report from Public Works.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Potem, members of the council. As the mayor indicated, this is MPDS, or National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Ballot Proceedings for Development Project. This is the truck parking lot project on the corner of Rivard and San Celeste. It's a condition of approval for development projects to meet the state requirements for our National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System. Property owners can request this process and this property owner has done so. This would result in a parcel charge to the specific parcels, does not affect the city as a whole. So what staff is recommending is that we hold the public hearing and absent any compelling testimony, we close the public hearing, then also seeking a recommendation from council to take action to conduct the ballot process and accept the results of the ballot once the clerk opens the ballots up. And if a yes vote, then go ahead and set the rate as described in the ballot. That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Any council questions of staff? I'll go ahead and open up the hearing. Okay, any public testimony, Madam Clerk?
None.
Okay, I'll close the hearing and then I'll entertain that we direct the city clerk to go ahead and open and count the returned MPDS ballots. Okay, motion by Councilmember Guyva, second by Councilmember Marquez. And then we'll just wait a little moment while you go ahead and count the ballots.
One ballot, yes vote.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to go ahead and approve.
I'm moved.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Guyva, second by Councilmember Cabrera. Go ahead and please vote. Okay, moves on, we will go ahead and move on to E2, which is a 39-unit apartment complex, adoption of proposed resolution for the vacation of a portion of the north side of Hemlock Avenue. So it's just a vacation of a certain area there. So we'll have a brief staff report. Go ahead, Michael.
Good evening again. This is a public hearing for the potential vacation of a portion of Hemlock. So the project is a 39-unit apartment complex, which is on the, is west of the intersection of Hemlock and Hickok. The condition of approval for this project requires the vacation of the excess right-of-way, which is about seven feet of Hemlock on the north side, as seen in the photo there, the area outlined in blue. So the resolution I'm intent to vacate was taken to council back in September 18th and set the public hearing for tonight. The proper notices and the postings were done in accordance with the public Streets and Highway Code section. Staff is recommending that the council conduct the public hearing and absent any compelling testimony, close the public hearing, adopt the resolution to vacate that portion of Hemlock's right-of-way, and to record the resolution with the county. That concludes my report.
Okay, any council questions of staff? Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and open the hearing. Any applicant testimony, Madam Clerk?
No, just public, Rafael Burguerras.
Okay, for public comments? Okay.
Good evening, once again, Mayor, council members, staff, residents, and our guests. This is the nice thing about getting the agenda early, five days early, so everyone in this city has an opportunity to read it and go over it like myself and entreat themselves what's going on with the things in the city of Moreno Valley. I went to the planning commission about this project, okay? Hemlock is getting a new facelift, facelift. They're getting 39 extra units being built in that neighborhood. So that's gonna help it a lot better because that's one of the oldest parts of the city. So it needs a new facelift. And what's holding it up? Seven feet is holding it up. If you approve this tonight, it'll go forward. If not, it'll stay there. But the good thing is that one law rides over another law. And I'm gonna read it to you. It's in page 303, page 2. Is in accordance with the Street and Highway Code, in addition to the project condition of approval, requires that seven feet of the existing right-of-way along the project footage be vacated due to the excess right-of-way and to accommodate the project proposal onsite improvements. One law overrides the other. The law to improve rides the seven. Simple. That's the good thing about the law. It tells you clearly. So let's approve this tonight so we can have those 39 units be built sooner than later. That's all it is, seven feet. I hope it gets approved tonight. Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and close the hearing. Any council deliberation? Okay, seeing no request, I'll entertain a motion by council to approve. Motion by Councilmember Cabrera, second by Councilmember Marquez. Please vote. It's approved, four yes, one abstention. And we're gonna move on to item G1, introduction of ordinance amending chapter 5.05. We'll have a report of financial and management services, Marshall Ironman.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Potem, members of the council. I'd like to just make a few opening comments before turning it over to Marshall. When the council voted to allow legal commercial cannabis business, business in Moreno Valley, your direction to staff was very, very clear. We are to ensure that permitted businesses comply with all legal requirements and to vigorously prosecute illegal operations. We're following your direction. Illegal businesses are closed as swiftly as the law allows in every situation. And our team is also successfully pursuing criminal charges to include multimillion-dollar asset forfeitures and federal criminal indictments. That is vigorous prosecution of illegal cannabis operators in our community. Our permit program is a work in progress. The law changes. We're learning as we go. As promised, we're here with some recommendations for technical updates as well as to provide the council with an opportunity to discuss policy issues associated with commercial cannabis business permits. And with that introduction, I'll turn it over to Chief Financial Officer, Marshall Ironman.
Thank you, City Manager.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Potem, city council members. When the city embarked on the commercial cannabis permit process, we anticipated ongoing refinements as the law evolved and based upon our experiences through the initial application period. I expect that additional refinements will continue to come forward as this emerging industry continues to grow in the state and we receive new guidance from the state and other jurisdictions as well. Now that the city has completed the initial commercial cannabis application permit process, the city is recommending some minor adjustments to the procedures developed for that process. Additionally, the report this evening presents a series of minor ordinance adjustments and updates to clarify regulations and reflect new state adjustments and laws along with the process set forth by the State Bureau of Cannabis Control. The updates this evening are being recommended to also ensure consistency among the city's ordinances and resolutions pertaining to the process that the council uses to determine the number of permits to be issued for each type of commercial cannabis business. Ordinance provisions allow the council to set the number of permits either by ordinance or resolution. We're recommending that the council set the number by resolution so that ordinances deal solely with the regulations and processes while the number of permits are set forward via resolution. Now that the initial application process has concluded, we're also presenting the council, as the city manager noted, with a series of options to establish the number of commercial cannabis permits that are available in the city of Moreno Valley. The alternatives are to proceed with the current number of permits approved, adjust the numbers based on the business interest levels expressed during the initial application process, or grant permits to all businesses that meet all state and local compliance requirements. Again, though, please note that before opening any business, those who receive permits must receive a permit from the state, must receive a conditional use permit, a certificate of occupancy. They must comply with all other aspects and pay with the annual permit fee to the city before they receive their final permit and authorization to operate as a commercial cannabis business in the city. With that, that concludes my report.
Yeah. Honorable Mayor, Mayor Potem, if I just may add, as both the city manager and Honorable Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, if I just may add, as both the City Manager and our Chief Financial Officer identified, this item is before you for several corrections or changes to the both ordinances. What I want to make sure is clear is that should the council decide to do something different with the number of permits, those applicants who have successfully concluded the application process and who are in the queue for the potential permits in the future would be the first ones that would be eligible for any additional permits, should the council decide that that would be the case.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll go ahead and move on to council questions of staff. Okay, Councilmember Gaiba?
I only have two questions. First, who asked to agendize this?
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council, our office, working with Finance Department, put this item on the agenda as anticipated to make technical cleanups to the ordinances.
And what precipitated you putting this on the agenda?
Because we have completed the round, the initial round of applications, provisional permits have been issued, and this is the point in time when technical adjustments seemed appropriate.
Thank you very much. I don't believe that's quite true, but the future will show that. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem, Baca?
Yes, this is for the city attorney. You made a comment about the businesses that are in the queue. Can you explain that a little further? What do you mean by that? I know that, I have the paper here.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Mayor Pro Tem and council members.
I have the numbers. I know that there was, I think, 23 dispensaries that qualified and eight received permits.
That is exactly correct.
Are you talking about the ones, just using the dispensaries, the ones that did not win the lottery? Those are the ones that you're calling in the queue?
That is correct. That's an excellent example. The 15 that are remaining that did not, were not drawn, but successfully completed the application process. Should the council decide to change the number of permits for dispensaries, the order from nine to 23, I believe, is the, they would be, those individuals or those companies would be eligible to move forward should they desire to do so with receiving a conditional or provisional cannabis business permit.
And what would happen with, let's say, someone else applies? What do they, what's the difference?
Well, the, in order for anybody else to apply, we, the city would open the new application process, assuming that the council moves forward with approval of the resolution which sets the new processes, because it's no longer the initial application process. It is now an application process for commercial cannabis business permits. Any of those who would move forward with the application, successfully complete the application process and were eligible to receive permits, should the number of available permits exceed the number of the current applicants that have already completed that progress, anybody who went through the new application process successfully would be eligible to be considered for additional permits. Over and beyond whatever number in excess of eight, the council would decide to move forward, should you desire to do so tonight.
Okay, and my next question is, it's been months since the lottery. What's the status of the eight, for example, the eight dispensaries?
Then the next step in the process for anybody who successfully ordered a provisional condition, conditional cannabis business permit is to file an application for a conditional use permit for the land use entitlement related to the operation of the business. It is my understanding that to date, the city has received, and this-
Two.
Two, yeah, has received two applications, and those, I believe, were from those who were successful in the micro-business permits. I am not aware of any dispensary provisional permit having applied for a conditional use permit. And by the way, there is no requirement, and one follows the other. If an applicant elects to apply for both of them at the same time, that certainly is a process that they can engage in at their own risk.
And they had to apply with the state as well, correct?
That is absolutely correct. In addition to getting a conditional use permit and a regulatory permit, they obviously need to have a state license.
Thank you.
Just have a couple questions here, Martin. So just to clarify then, what I'm hearing is that of the eight that won the lottery for the dispensary component, that none of them have filed for a CUP yet.
That is correct.
And then, my other question is, does, actually, do other cities have, for example, so do other cities have limits? Like, for example, Paris, did they have a certain amount for-
Okay, go ahead.
City Manager?
Yes, Mayor, I was recently speaking with the City Manager of Paris, and if I understood what he told me correctly, it was the city council voted to expand their uses from medical to also include recreational, although they didn't put a strict number limit on how many would be issued. What they did was they approached it as anyone who had a qualified application under medical would also be allowed to operate under recreational.
Okay, and then again, just to clarify, any of the folks that were eligible, can you kind of just talk about the process that those individuals went through, as far as what they had to do? I know that there were interviews involved, background checks.
Yes, Mayor, it was a multi-step process. The first step was a review by, an independent review by HDL that was contracted to screen the applications. They are a recognized statewide leader. They contract with many, many cities across the state, so we had them do that. After the screening process, there was an appeal process where if some permits, some applications were not approved, they could, they could appeal to staff. Then the next step was interviews. Then after the interviews came background checks. At the end of all that, the number of eligible applicants was determined. We had applicants in two categories, where the number of eligible applicants exceeded the number of available permits. That was for micro-business and retail. In both of those, for both of those categories, a lottery was held. It was held in this room. It was videoed. The video is a matter of public record. And all eligible applicants were drawn, and every one of them was provided with a number. Numbers one through eight on retail, dispensaries, for example, number one through eight were awarded provisional permits. We kept drawing, so that there's number nine through number 23, so that if more permits became available, whether that be because one of the awardees defaulted, or should the council increase the number of available permits in that order, those provisional permits would be awarded. So we tried to have a very, we did better than try. We succeeded in a very transparent, legally compliant process, and provided full policy options to this council, should you wish to make a change to the number of permits to be granted. Sorry for the lengthy explanation, but we went through a lot of steps to do this right per your direction.
And the eligible applicants, they received a score in order to be considered eligible? Can you talk about that? What that score was?
It required a minimum score of 80, was it, Marshall? Overall of 80, and no less than 70 in each individual category that HDL used to rate the applications. It was very rigorous.
And some of the categories involved, like community benefit, how it's gonna give back to the community, right?
Absolutely, and that was at the direction of the council. The council wanted to make sure that that was part of the, part of the process, and it was.
Councilmember Marquez?
Yeah, I got one question. On the CUPs, what's the timeframe, from the time that the applicant applies for it to the time it's granted? What's the timeframe? Can anybody answer that?
We have estimated four and a half to six months for that process.
So what we're saying is then, this, we can issue a license or permit sometime in this coming summer, the first one, correct?
Assuming that the applicants meet all the criteria, follow all the steps, and fulfill their responsibilities, it could be-
That's up to two revisions.
Yeah, and it could be as quickly as the summer, but the timing really is theirs.
When you say theirs, what, I mean, can you kind of-
Well, as with, as with any applicant, for whether it be a building permit or a conditional use permit, there are certain requirements, there are certain documents they need to provide.
So it's administration, basically?
We're ready to move as quickly as we get the documents. If the winds at our backs, we might be able to open, to provide final permits within a few months. Yeah.
So with that being said, I guess I'll wait to my deliberations. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, we'll go ahead and move to public comments. Madam Clerk?
We have six speakers so far. Donovan Siddique, Wayne Manija, Sean Fortine.
Good evening again. Let's jump my thing. Okay, I've been here 41 years, and I'm just gonna say this. I'm not saying this is a bad idea, but I hope we've done our research to what has happened in Colorado. They are having a major problem with crime, guns, and just the industry itself as the crime lords come in and they undersell the legal ramifications. And right now, Colorado is actually thinking of repealing their cannabis laws, because it's that much of a problem. So I'm just gonna do a quick recap for you guys. We approve warehouses. Nothing wrong with warehouses, everybody knows. I'm not against warehouses. I'm against where they're located, because I do have a logistics background. I did take the RCC course. Now, when you have empty warehouses, that attracts homeless people. It seems like in this city, we keep shooting ourselves in the foot, and nothing against the staff. These guys, they work hard, but then again, they don't live here either. So if I didn't live in the place, and I'm just bringing in whatever I could bring in to keep my job, not saying that you guys are doing that, you guys are doing a great job, I'm gonna do what I need to do. But would I want a cannabis store anywhere near my home? Would I want a warehouse anywhere near my home in Laguna Niguel in Orange County? Of course not. So now we bring in the homeless people, which brings in the trucks, which tears up our roads. Then with the trucks comes the lizard lots. For those at home that don't know what lizard lots are, please look that up. And then with the lizard lots, now we've come to the cannabis. Do you guys see a pattern that's happening here? Show me a successful city that has all of these dynamics together. If you think that that is a good combination of all these things put together with a limited police force, are you guys serious? You want to bring in, you could bring in a number of cannabis, I would say limited, but look at our police force as well. At any given time in a city of over 200,000 people, you guys know as well as I know, there's only eight officers on duty. You guys know that. And you want to bring in a cannabis operation that some people on the council, the mayor, has been getting donations from. So I want you guys to think about that.
Next speaker?
Hello? Hi.
Good evening, Wayne.
Good evening. I agree with him, and I also do agree to disagree, as being one of the proprietaries and doing business here in Moreno Valley and being awarded, thank you for doing a great policy and a great program on getting legal shops here in the city. I commend everybody here, from staff to the city council. Is there a need for any more? No, absolutely not. There is no, and I'm, and I'm opening up a shop in the city, and I am for this, but I am against any more shops, because you have to take it step by step, stone by stone. And you have to look at this, Colorado is not in trouble. Colorado is actually doing great. So I can give you the statistics, and I give you the report. Okay, I am from Brooklyn, New York originally. I understand everything about gentrification. Laguna Niguel, I spent a third of my life over there. Will there be dispensaries there? Yes, next year they will change this. Does Moreno Valley need more than what you guys already offered now? No. Are we changing the schematics of the land to make it nicer in certain areas? We took the old Stater brothers. We are gonna spend millions of dollars to gentrify that location over there, which is decimated with homeless people. I have gone in there three times, chased them out with tasers. I want to build a homeless community here in Moreno Valley, for the homeless people, to educate them, to give them jobs. Hopefully, the rest of the cannabis people will come on board with us and donate the money they make. But let's look at this. Let's go for the eight plus the two, which was 10. 28 people submitted, 44 for total, for cultivation, for manufacturing, distribution. Anybody can donate to any city council member that they want to for political. If they want to give it back, they can give it back. But that's like going up to Washington and saying, hey, guess what? You raised $2 million for my campaign, or a billion dollars, and saying, nothing happened. This is life. But that's not what we're here for. We're here to actually educate the community, do great stores, take care of police, and do as best as possible, be exemplary for the community, and say, okay, let's start off with the 10. Don't let anybody bully you, because we did a lottery here. We all came here, and we got drawn out from a ticket. There was nothing here done. If you want to indict people, indict the people who can't get it done, because they're angry, because they didn't get a lottery ticket. Do you go back and return your Powerball, because you go, hey, guess what? I spent $1,000 on Powerball. I didn't win a billion dollars. It happens. Let's just do it right. You guys are doing it right. Leave it alone. There's no need. It's just gonna blow up in our face, and it's gonna look really ridiculous. Santa Ana did it with 20. 20, there were 380,000 people. There's 24,000 people per shop. You guys are right at the right number. When you get to 250,000 people, increase. When the demand comes, increase. Just please, leave it alone. I'm thankful here. That's it.
Thank you, Wayne. Next three speakers.
Hi, I actually used to be in favor of medical marijuana, and I'm not gonna go into exactly what happened to change that, because actually, sometimes I'll think about that person, actually. But in the process, I actually had a meeting with a doctor about that, and he explained that not only is it not as, well, basically that there's a whole lot of problems with it that, in terms of both physical and mental health, that have been basically swept under the rug, and basically, a lot of the stuff we hear is just the same thing said over and over again until we believe it. And then there's also issues with, there's studies to prove it, and I also have a study about the quality of life, that people that use marijuana tend to have more social, personal problems and financial problems and legal problems than their parents, except for traffic tickets for some reason. That doesn't explain, but it's too long for this, for this council, and too complex for flunkies, but the other thing is, with having all these businesses, people that are over 21 have pretty much made up their minds about whether or not they want to use marijuana or not. And quite frankly, that means that if we have a bunch of new businesses, they have to be advertising somehow, and they need to get more people to start using somehow, and, well, it's probably not gonna be from the over 21 crowd. And last of all, I find it interesting that we're having this meeting at this time discussing legalizing more shops, considering that Mayor Gutierrez accepted $40,000 from cannabis companies fairly recently. So, yeah, I hope you guys take that all into consideration, because there's a lot more going on than what's been presented, so thanks.
Next three speakers, Joshua Nigar, Chris Henry, and Rafael Burguerras.
Good evening, Mayor, council staff. My name is Joshua D. Nigar, local attorney in Paris, president of the Paris Chamber of Commerce. I spoke, I got the privilege of speaking here maybe 30 days ago, on the free market system. I am an advocate for the free market system, not just for cannabis, but for pretty much anything. I think the lottery was a good way to establish fairness, but there's also another way to establish fairness. It's called the free market system. but there's also another way to establish fairness. It's called the free market system. Paris did it. Paris had no limits on its retail cannabis dispensaries when they started their program. When we got up to about sixteen or seventeen applicants, two-plus years in, we only have three or four licenses right now. Why is that? It's difficult. I know everybody watches TV, they read a magazine, but the majority of the applicants probably in this room or in your city probably don't have another licensed dispensary, probably are maybe investors or rookies. The problem with the lottery is it doesn't really do a good job of segregating rookies with maybe the right business fit for this city. So a free market system will do that. It's designed to do it. It's like a footrace and it alone, nature alone, the market alone decides the winners and losers. And I think that's more in the traditions of the spirit of American entrepreneurialism in my estimation. Additionally, with Paris being the model for what's happened under HDL, we only have four licenses about a year or two into it. So I think we've seen what happens when you just pick a few. I think the testimony by your city manager buttressed that point by suggesting that you don't have any CUPs for retail right now. You're two months in. But let's dial in even closer to what Paris did. Two years in, they did a moratorium. So they said, all right, no more applications. Sixteen's enough. We only have four licenses. So what's the problem? Why has it taken two years for 12 applicants to sit there? So the planning department is actually taking a closer look at each file, issued letters indicating that if you don't move your file forward, you know, within thirty days or ninety days, you lose it. So there's many ways for the city to use the carrot and the stick to move applicants along. And I don't see any reason to limit the applicants to eight when, again, that is no metric of how well they're going to do. Again, a city of this size, double, more than double the size of Paris, has less than half the amount of parrots, licenses Paris has. So I would advocate for letting the free market handle this and allowing all the people or the businesses and applicants that went through the rigorous process to pursue it. Let the ones in the queue pursue it. You can raise that if you need to. You can do a moratorium if you need to, just like Paris. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Next two speakers?
Good evening. My name is Christopher Henry, mayor, staff, council members. Here today on behalf of not just the cannabis industry, but as a resident and an operator. As to what Attorney Nager said, I totally agree with him. The lottery system does not weed out the weak from the strong. It does not bring in necessarily the best players that will bring the revenue to the city. But more along the sides of, let's do a comparison from city to city. Let's look at, take for instance Cathedral City, also Riverside County, 54,000 residents. They've issued over 100-plus cannabis licenses in that city. When you look at the beautification of the city that's taken place, you're talking close to $50 million that the industry has used and donated back within the city, reinvested into the city to put in sidewalks, to put in parks, to put in, bring in sewage lines. And if you talk to any of the members of the city, any of the residents of the city that welcome the industry, it doesn't bring crime. It doesn't bring down the city. It actually does the opposite and it provides jobs. Average starting salary for a cultivator in Cathedral City and around Southern California is $81,000 to $103,000 according to Forbes. What industries are bringing those jobs in? Definitely not warehousing. When you look at dispensing, average salaries are starting $17 to 24 hours starting salaries. So what other industries are bringing those type of low-level jobs into the city? I live in the city. I have kids in the city. I'm a father. And I give back to the city consistently. You've seen me up here before and I advocate to open it up and let the industry weed out the strong from the weak. In any other type of business, the strong will survive, the weak won't. And after all, what we do want in the city of Moreno Valley is the strong players. We want the tax revenue. We want the jobs. We want the stability. We don't want the fly-by-nighters that were up here setting up trailers that somehow slid in under the radar and got a lottery ticket. They won't survive. When you bring in the good guys and you bring in corporate money and not the legal operations like some of these people out here are trying to slander other organizations as such, you have strength. And we work hand-in-hand with the city to deliver jobs and stability. Thank you.
Thank you. Next three speakers, Rafael Brugueros, Orlando Montero, and Shada Wad.
Good evening once again, mayor, council members, staff, residents. I had an opportunity to go over this. It's true. If Roy was here tonight, you would hear those words. Let the industry be free. Let it ring. Let's see what happens. Allow it to flourish on its own. I voted no on marijuana when it first came out, when the governor. But ever since then, I changed my mind only because of the medical marijuana and the 68% of people that voted for it. They wanted something for themselves. Who am I to stop them? To have their recreational marijuana or their booze or their cigarette, you know, or whatever they do in their own privacy. Who am I to stop them from having that? But I do like what Paris is doing. Allowing the market to run because it's true. If you have 100 applicants, you're only gonna get five, the strongest five to come in, to do the best. But I want Moreno Valley residents to understand something. The city manager and the city attorney said it correctly. We have the toughest, the toughest rules in the city of Moreno Valley. We have the toughest laws and people are crying about those laws so we can downplay them, bring them down so people can come in. No to the laws. We want to keep our laws as tough as we can because that was going to weave out those that are not going to be faithful to us by keeping the law and protecting our kids. We have a guy, we have two people sitting in the city of Moreno Valley. One on Frederick and the other one Alexandra. And both of them have the cross in green and you see them on the corner, going like this. Those are the ones that I want out. Those are the ones that we should be chasing by allowing illegal marijuana dispensaries to come into our city, to drive them out. We're never gonna see 100, never, because the planning commission has control of that also. So we're gonna do our best to allow only those that can make it in our city, whether we do the eight or whether we do the 100 or whether we do the 23. Let the market rule out those that can't make it. Allow the market to fight for those that only can make it. Let us be free. Let Moreno Valley grow.
Thank you, Rafael.
Good evening, mayor, mayor pro tem, council members, staff. I've been an advocate for the cannabis since the very beginning and I'd like to say that the staff has done a tremendous job of making sure that all of the regulations are in place. I went through the process. I'm an applicant. And it was one of the hardest things I've ever done in my life. It was very difficult to get through that application process. They did their homework. They got the right people applying. The ones that made it through the interview process, they're the people that should be, they're businessmen. I'm a businessman. I'm a broker. I'm a developer. We're trying to build 104 homes here in the city of Moreno Valley. We're almost done with our final map. So, you know, you're dealing with business people. You're bringing out the business from out of the shadows and you're bringing it to legitimate businessmen, members of your city, of your community. And that's what you want. The process of the lottery eight people, it's not enough. And the fact that the people who got those lottery tickets have not continued on with the process. There's a reason why they haven't continued on with the process. It's complicated. It's very difficult. It's time-consuming. It's very costly. It's not something simple. So allow the free market to dictate it. The strong will survive. To address Mr. Siddique's comments earlier, we don't have enough police officers. Well, guess what? This is one of the solutions. This is gonna bring money to the city. It's gonna bring tax revenue. It's gonna bring more public safety officers, more police. It's paying for those things that the city still needs. It's bringing good jobs, good-paying jobs, not just low-income jobs. We're talking about living wage jobs. It's what this city's been doing for the last few years. You've done a wonderful job so far. Continue doing that. Allow the free market to dictate it. You know, one of the things that I commend the city for is the public benefits component. Every single licensed cannabis business that comes to the city is obligated to reach out to the community, to give back to the community. How many other businesses do that? They're not obligated to do it. We are. I mean, I come from a family where my wife's an activist and she's always, we're feeding 25 families right now. So we are, we're giving people, we're giving family. Let that type of people come into this city and run this type of business. Legitimate business people that know what they're doing. You've done a wonderful job so far. Let the free market dictate it.
Next three speakers?
Everybody, my name is Shada Wad. This is probably my fourth time coming here within the last year and a half.
More into the microphone.
The question I have for you guys, if you have just won the Mega Million, what are you gonna do? Everybody, if you just won the Mega Million, what are you gonna do? You have 180 days to claim your prize. So out of the 10 that you gave, remember, the micro-businesses, the two, have applied for the conditional use permit. The eight have not. I'm in the queue. You know, I don't want to say one number. I'm pretty close. Give me the date. It's tough for me to keep paying that rent, keep paying that rent, keep paying that rent and say, hey, I'm in the queue for another three years, four years. I have a vacant building. My landlord is looking at me like, what are you gonna do? Keep paying the rent? And I'm looking at you guys like, what do you want me to do? Keep paying the rent? We have a community benefit package, you know, that's crazy. Not because, you know, you guys are telling us you have to do the community benefits. We're telling you that we want to do the community benefits. We're telling you exactly what we want to do with the community benefits. Me personally, I'm telling you right now, if the porta potty is a solution for that, I'm doing the porta potty. But who's gonna clean it up? If I pay for the porta potty, is somebody else gonna clean it up? I will pay for it for the next three years, out of my pocket, nothing to do with anything else. It's those kind of programs that we come here, we hear the problems, but I don't know how to maintain a porta potty, let's say for instance. Another thing too is you have after-school programs. We're saying, hey, we don't want our kids to do this, obviously, but we want money to generate to the kids. I don't want, I was driving with my kids and I see it on the corner of, you know, Ironwood and Pigeon Pass, the cross sign, you know what I mean? And guys knocking on the window and giving me a card, you know what I mean? Open 24 hours a day, seven days. It's the reality that we have. You guys are closing on pretty fast. But another thing you guys have to realize is the black market's out there. So if you're not allowing anybody legal to get it in, the illegals are gonna come in and that's where they're benefiting. You know, the problem that we have and the biggest thing is it's very rigorous. It's a very tough process to get in. You know, it's, you know, another thing you have, out of the 23, you know, the applicants you have, I don't know, a lot of people don't know this, but you have lawyers, you have doctors, you have national football players, you have engineers, you have, you have regular entrepreneurs, you have a person that's, you know, blessed, a trust fund kid, you know what I mean? None of those are me. But that's your applicants. Allow them to try their luck. And then when you have your eight, 10, 15, whatever the moratorium you guys have, say, no more. That's okay. You guys put 27 licenses out there altogether and only you guys give out 16 lottery tickets. And of those 16, only two have applied. But you guys are doing a great job. Thank you guys for your time and it's kind of good luck on everybody's election. I know it's kind of hectic and stuff and it's tough to have this before the election because you gotta make a sound choice of what's right versus what's popular. Thank you.
Okay, next speakers is Jonathan Sakanas and Luis Polymares.
Hello, council, community. I just want to keep mine short. Back to his point about the rent, all applicants, I'm one of the selected winners. I'm 23 years old. I'm a young entrepreneur. Back, we all took a risk. He's stating that, oh, we select, pay our rent, pay our rent. We gotta still pay our rent to the landlords. But they knew what they were getting into, like in business in general, like, you know, it's a gamble. Nothing's guaranteed. But the lottery, I thought you guys did a great job, you know. I personally think that's enough. Roll with what we got and then improve it as we go. I mean, I feel like that's the logical thing to do. You guys have decided on this already to change it again because some people are upset. Doesn't seem fair. Thank you.
Next speaker is John, oh no, Luis Polymares. Okay, Luis, Luis?
Luis Polymares, community activist. Well, I'd be mad too, you know? Come on, I put all this money into it, what, 50,000? Put my application in, well, you know, these two guys that are saying, oh, wow, you did this, you did that with the council. You already said how many you were gonna do and all that. Wow, but they would be up here too crying if they didn't get theirs pulled up. Believe me, I guess they're worried about the competition. But like all the other speakers are saying, my goodness, it's a rigorous, rigorous, you know, thing to do. It's hard. It's very hard. And eight put in, where are they? They're dragging their feet. They bit off more than they could chew. But the ones that are here, they're serious. They're serious and they want to do this and it's not fair to them to be waiting on these eight till they good, good and ready, till they figure it all out, till they really see what they really want to do or get the money or whatever they need to do to make it happen, the rest of it, the rest of the process. So these ones that are here today, I think they should at least take care of the 23 or the less, the 15. They're not all gonna, it's all gonna, it's not all gonna happen. You know, a lot of them, like one of the speakers was saying, 100 applications in Paris and how many are operating right now? And it's gonna take a while. It's not gonna happen overnight. So I think these guys should get a fair shake and be able to do, set up business and if they got the right things to do it and they go through all the applications and cross all their Ts and dot all their Is, they should be able to do this. It's not fair. It isn't fair. And I know they said, oh, well, they drew Lotto, Lotto. I think that was a mistake to begin with. You should have, let the market dictate. Because like I said, by the time they all start, the 23, they're gonna be down to about maybe 10 in the end. Because right now you only got two there. There's eight openings and only two have already done something or going forward and that's it. So please think about this good and hard today and as far as like they were saying about, you know, the ones on the corners, you know, they're going out, they're going after them big. Because I see them and the next day they're not there again and then they set up again somewhere, but then they're out of there again. They're coming down hard on them. So if we're gonna let them dictate, the ones with the signs, and if we're gonna let the black market come in, then we're really gonna be in a ton of hell, you know? Call E. There's all a lot of different cities and they're doing fine. I don't know what this guy's talking about, Colorado. Like I said, he's worrying about the big competition, you know? Wow. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Luis. So we'll go ahead and move to deliberation. We'll do one round of deliberation. Mayor Pro Tem Baca?
Okay, well, hopefully I don't forget to say something. I just want to say, first of all, that none of us on the council has ever had the opportunity to participate in the cannabis business and how to do the ordinances and the laws and the process. So we did what we thought was best. So we had the lottery and everyone that went in, I think, I believe, you know, was hopeful. And of course, you know, the ones that didn't win were very disappointed and that's where we are today. So thank you, city manager, for bringing this back to the council so that we could do the technical cleanup on the ordinances in addition to looking at it again. I believe that seeing that with the eight winners, we still don't have the businesses open. I believe that, um, seeing that with the eight winners, we still don't have the businesses open, I believe that, um, we should open it up so that the free market dictates how this business is going to operate. And the reason I say that is because we do that for every other business except that the cannabis business has the stigma attached to it. So everyone, you know, not everyone, but many people look down on it. Many people are afraid to make decisions. I'm not. I'm not afraid. So, saying all that, I know that, uh, with HDL, and I would like the city manager to elaborate, or someone on the staff, to elaborate a little more on what HDL would do from this point forward with the new applications if we go that way. I know that we have a stringent and rigorous process that, um, the lottery went through, the winners and the applicants. And, um, even the people that didn't win the lottery, I know that they went through that process. And I know for a fact, you know, based on what you're saying out there, that, um, you're still paying rent. You're still paying rent and you're still hopeful that Moreno Valley will, uh, give you the opportunity to do business. And I do recognize you as businessmen and women, entrepreneurs, that are coming to our city to do business. I don't see it as, as, um, the black market, um, rising to the surface. Uh, the black market is there and they're not applying for licenses here in Moreno Valley. And I know that our police department does an excellent job in closing down the ones that we find. But there's still more out there. And I know that we will continue to close down the black market as, uh, we go forward, even with the new shops opening up. I know it's very complicated and it's very expensive and like, uh, some of the speakers that are more knowledgeable about this business, no. Not everyone's gonna make it. It's just like the restaurant business. Not everybody makes it. I mean, we have our hopes and dreams. We open up a restaurant and what happens, you know? You know, a year later, you're shut down because it didn't work. And that's gonna happen in this industry as well. Yes, there was a public obligation, uh, public benefit obligation attached to the application. And everyone that applied had to, um, indicate how the public was gonna benefit from this business. And I know that, uh, we're looking forward to that. I know there's a lot of nonprofits and other agencies out there that are looking forward to this business being, um, profitable. I just wanna say, um, that I hope we make the right decision tonight. And I know that, um, there's five of us up here and we'll wait and see how it turns out. Thank you.
Councilmember Marquez.
Thank you, mayor. Yeah, I've been, I've been pretty much, not sleepy nights, thinking about this. As everybody knows, I was against this right from the beginning. I was concerned about this, that these problems would arise from the beginning. We didn't give enough time to our staff to research. Now we're asking them to do something else. But we should have thought about this when we proposed this and approved of this. You can't do something like this in six months. And that's what staff was told to do, six months. It takes over a year. One of our staff even said it, it takes over a year to do this. The research. You can't do it overnight. So you do something overnight and this is the results. Can't do it. The biggest problem is this. What if the federal law intervenes? And people in Washington, Washington State or Washington DC decides to pull the plug and says, "It's still illegal to sell marijuana." We're going after the states that are selling it. What if that happens? Where are we gonna be? We got a lot of work to look at, a lot of work if that happens. With this administration in Washington, who knows? They can even do it next week. We need to research this. We can wait another couple of months. Let the staff work with what they have now. But we, we, we can't rush to this. Now, I understand a couple of the applicants were here and they had said, "Well, you know, we're renting. We don't know which way to go yet. We don't know if we should give up this rental property." We have a lot of property, rental properties in Moreno Valley. And yes, there's some that you can't open a cannabis dispensary because it's too close to a school. But there's other facilities that you can rent. Don't rush it. Don't rush it. If you're an applicant that didn't get hit in the lottery, well, you know what? It's like, like it's one guy said, you know, "You wanna buy a Lotto ticket? You put your money in there and you don't win? Try again later." Same thing with these applicants. If you didn't get chosen, which we did it legally, properly, and I think it was good the way we did it. I have nothing against that. I think our staff did a marvelous job. And I applaud them. But we, you know, we didn't give them enough time to really research this. We, I don't wanna rush it. I, my concern is the city's gonna get liable, be liable for something that we had to rush. I don't wanna give out any more money to lawsuits. Go with what we have now. Look at what we have now and let it play out. Let it play out. These eight applicants, six applicants that haven't applied for the CUPs yet, well, maybe after tonight, they realize that, um, hey, maybe we should. Maybe we should go and apply now. Let's go forward with this. Or they're gonna pull our license, our permits. Um, one speaker says, you know, thirty to forty-five days, give them that much. If you don't do it, we'll pull you and pick the next applicant that's in line. That's a, that's a good idea. But give these applicants that won the Lotto fairly and squarely time to get their business in order. I don't feel we have to give any more or unlimited license. I don't care what Paris does. I don't care what Cal Mesa does, Cathedral City does. This is Moreno Valley. And we wanna do, I wanna do it and my colleagues should wanna do it right the first time. This is nothing to play games with. Because again, federal law prohibits this and with our staff and our government in Washington, it scares me. So, I, I just want to let the applicants know that want fairly, the eight applicants who won the Lotto, go forward, get, start moving. Get your behind in gear and let's go. If not, you'll get an notice in the mail and let's do that. Let's give you thirty, forty-five days. If we don't see any movement, then we'll go to the next person in line with the Lotto. And go from there. But not rush this. I'm asking, do not rush this. Thank you.
Councilmember Gaiwa.
Thank you. Dave, I can't disagree with you in anything that you just said. My position hasn't changed. Two wrongs don't make one wrong right. I know the mayor has been touting the fact that, uh, the city voted sixty-one percent for marijuana and Prop sixty-four, whatever the proposition was. That's true. But we only have a twenty-three percent voting rate in our city. So really, one quarter of that was the ones who were voting. So, we still never really reached out to our community to find out if we, as a community, really ever won in marijuana in this city. I keep hearing about money, money, money. You know what? Morals, ethics, those things are worth more than dollars in my city. And I personally am standing up for the fact that this is something I don't think is in the best interest of the city from day one. There are five people up here gonna make the decisions. There's gonna be three that actually make that decision. Um, you know, or four, who knows? But the reality is, is I cannot vote for this, just like I couldn't vote for it before. Because I don't know how the rest of my city really felt. You know, if we had actually reached out to the rest of our city and our community instead of pushing this forward and rushing this, uh, process, if anybody remembers, I said, "Why are we in a hurry? Take your time. Do it the right way." Why did you wanna put this in place so soon, so quick? Let's learn from the mistakes of others. If this is what you want to do, I wanna know that I have a majority of my community that's really behind it. Look, I'll support my community, but I don't have that data. I don't have that information. Twenty-five percent of this city votes. So sixty-one percent voting for Prop sixty-four to put this marijuana in the state, but only twenty-five percent of that sixty-one percent. So I really don't know. And since this city and this and this, uh, majority and this staff, God bless them, they work hard. I know them very well. I've known these guys for years. Probably more than the rest of them have known them. And they're doing what they're asked to do. But the reality is, we don't have the true information from our community. And if sixty-one percent of our community wanted it and we have all of those people wanting to do this, I believe it's gonna bring us more problems in the future. We, it's just, it's typical of any kind of, uh, thing. When I say, "Two wrongs don't make one wrong right." Just look at the statistics from alcohol alone. We lose fifty thousand people a year to drunk drivers. Now you're gonna throw marijuana in the mix? And our, our, our police and fire department know what happens when they have to go out and, and, and take care of a situation where there's somebody who got killed in an accident because somebody was under the influence. And oh, by the way, we don't even have a law here to determine who's under the influence. Now, to iron all those pieces out, you're being, you're being unwise. That's the politest way I can put it. You're being unwise. And now you wanna make it so that there is no limit in my city. Now, before you made an argument, "We're gonna limit it, we're gonna limit it, we're gonna limit it." My question still stands. Why now, all of a sudden, are you saying, "Oh, let's let the market take care of it. Let's not have a limit." My question to the public, my question to the staff, my question to you folks, and you should be asking that same question, is why now? When we were vetting this a year ago, why now, all of a sudden, are we allowing no limit? Now, grant you, the market may not allow that many, that's true. But you're still saying, "Anybody who applies and follows those rules and those procedures can have a business in my city." If, you know, I could be incorrect on this, it's just a thought. Take it for what it's worth, but we have cartels down in south of us that own cities in the same fashion as I think we're pushing toward. And I'm not in favor of that, not in the slightest. So, it's obvious, after listening to everything, I know everybody wants to make money, money, money. We've been doing a great job. Mike Lee, your team is doing a wonderful job of bringing tax revenue to our city. We don't need our tax revenue to be added to by what I consider an immoral environment. You know, I grew up in the sixties, all right? I know. Out of six of us guys who were friends, two of them are dead to drugs. One ran into a telephone pole while on marijuana and the other one died of a morphine overdose at seventeen years old. I saw the effects of drugs on people. I saw it. And this is all we're doing now. We're gonna bring it into our city, make it even more accessible and give it to our teens, just like the alcohol issues. All right, that's my position. I'm standing by it and I'm not voting for this thing.
Just wanted to say that, um, you know, I don't think, you know, in regards to the ordinance that was passed several months ago or even with this cleanup item, you know, that we're giving anything to teens. Um, obviously, you know, if teens have it, then it's illegal. They're not supposed to have it. Uh, just, you know, like if teens have alcohol, you know, and they're using alcohol or if they're intoxicated publicly, uh, they're not allowed to have that. So, um, they'll suffer the consequences. You know, um, you know, they'll be charged with a crime because it's a crime. I also don't think that tonight we are, uh, asking the staff. I believe that the staff is recommending, uh, to us, uh, some options and cleanup items. So, uh, these are cleanup items in the sense that, you know, the ordinance was done, you know, several months ago. Uh, we didn't know exactly, you know, how many folks were going to apply. Uh, we didn't know that there were gonna be, I think it was like forty-four applicants or something like that total that came, you know, in the beginning. We didn't know that we were gonna get that many. Um, and so, you know, we did set limits, you know, at that time. And then we also didn't know that even if, you know, we set the limit and we did the Lotto, which we, I do believe we did that fair and square. Uh, but we didn't know that none of those folks were going to apply for the CUP process. So, that's another thing to keep in mind is that of the eight folks or the eight businesses, uh, that did receive those provisional permits, and I call them provisional because they are provisional permits, none of them have applied for the CUP process. So that tells you there, uh, that maybe those eight that we selected weren't the right ones, probably. Um, so Paris, you know, I think is a good example because, you know, they have no limits and only four dispensaries are there. I think one of the speakers, I forgot if it was Nagar that said that. Um, I think that's a great point right there. And we have to keep in mind that it's not that twenty-three will open right away or whichever the amount of the eligible, uh, folks or whatever that are gonna open right away because they still have to go through the CUP process, which is a lengthy process. You know, they have to show, um, all of the requirements, uh, that they need to provide to the planning staff. They have to go through planning and then their fees. They have to do the fees as well. And then the market will end up dictating whether they succeed or not. Um, so, um, you know, I've always been, you know, for regulations and I'm still for regulations and closing down the illegal ones. And I do know that if you don't have, you know, at least, you know, some, you know, out there, then more illegal ones are gonna pop up. And so, I'd rather have the ones that are regulated. And, um, so, you know, I do support, you know, the recommendation, you know, as far as, you know, maybe having no limits. You know, I think that might be a big thing, you know, for many people to grasp. Um, you know, so I would support option B, which is, um, to at least allow the eligible, the ones that are at least eligible. That means the ones that made it through the application process, scored eighty percent. Uh, and, and mind you, that was a separate process that I know none of the council members were a part of. And that's why that was contracted out. So HDL, you know, administered, uh, that program and, you know, they conducted the interviews. We weren't in part of the interviews or anything like that. So, um, I do recommend at least, you know, allowing the ones that are at least eligible. That means that went through the whole process already and paid some of their fees to start the next process, which is the CUP, planning fees and then allowing the market to dictate.
Councilmember Carrera.
Thank you. So, this definitely is not an easy topic. It's not an easy decision. It's, uh, gonna be a difficult vote as well. And I'll leave my personal beliefs, personal preferences about cannabis out of this decision as much as possible. But I do wanna, uh, say a few things. I wanna touch on a couple different aspects of this topic. So, I'm definitely open to changing the number of permits, not just for commercial retail, but for the microbusiness, uh, for the distribution cultivation. That's something that we need to look at again. Uh, especially the zoning. Uh, that's something that I brought up before to take a second look at where we allow the cannabis businesses to operate, specifically for distribution cultivation and microbusiness, uh, to include industrial areas because, uh, to me, uh, if we're trying to bring in revenue for the city, we need to be looking at the distribution and the cultivation and the microbusiness. And we, we really, uh, constricted and confined the areas where these cannabis businesses can go and operate, uh, which is industrial buildings, light industrial buildings. So we need to take a look at that again. So, on one side, you have the financial impacts of cannabis, which, right now, as we're all very aware, the state and the country is struggling to find revenue to pay for things like more police officers, to fix our roads, to address the homeless problem, to pay for student tuition, to pay for pensions and unfunded liabilities. And, and that's the problem that we're all dealing with, especially in California. Trying to find revenue to take care of these issues. So that's, that's the financial impact. But then there's also the social impact. And that's something that... and that's something that we as policymakers have to take into account. And, and I, I represent District Four. I'm right on the border with Paris. And I know they don't have four dispensaries, maybe four legal ones, but there's more than that. A lot of that seeps over to my district. We have smoke shops that, that I was not a part of, of opening, but I see, I see the, the rotations of the population that come to the smoke shops and the liquor stores and what happens there. And I'm not saying that's all due to cannabis, but I see what's going on. And, and so, again, I'm open to the idea of looking at changing the number of permits, changing the zoning. But I think we need to take a little bit more time to look at that, to make sure that we're doing this correctly and that we are not rushing this, and we're not doing it too quickly and, and shooting ourselves in the foot. And again, I want to remind everyone, I'm in favor of legalizing cannabis. I voted for it. I was one of the votes to bring it into this city. I, I do not agree with prohibition. It doesn't work. And I was a part of bringing it here to Moreno Valley because I understand that we need to get rid of that black market as much as possible. And we need to allow proper legal businesses to come in and operate. And small business owners that have come up here and spoken tonight give you the opportunity to come in and try to make some money and try to be successful. And I want to add as well that I have absolutely no problem at all with the medicinal side of cannabis. I'm a firm believer in the CBD, which a lot of you back there know what I'm talking about. CBD works, and we should be promoting that more. And hemp, we should be promoting that more, the agricultural industry, to start exporting more to other countries. We have a really good opportunity here in California. But the recreational side is a little bit tougher because you look at other drugs like alcohol and, and I think that's the closest one that I can compare it to, but at the end of the day, we do have a choice. And I don't believe the government should be here to tell the people, "No, you can't use cannabis. No, you can't use alcohol." The government should not be telling people what they can and cannot do. We should give the people the choice to make that decision whether an individual wants to use cannabis or alcohol or not use it. So, all in all, I think that we need to look at this in more detail. Maybe if we can bring this back at the next council meeting or even do a study session, so we can bring the complete package. But tonight, I think it's just, it's too quick. It's too fast to make this decision tonight. And I do want to make sure that, that anyone who wants to come into Moreno Valley to do business has the opportunity to be successful. And so I want to work with everyone, everyone who got into the lottery and everyone who did not. And we need to continue to have this conversation. I'm just asking for a little bit more time. Thank you.
Okay. So we'll go ahead and close the deliberation. Anybody else? No? Okay. We'll go ahead and close the deliberation. And I don't believe there's consensus. So we could move this item to a different... Because there is no consent... Oh, go ahead, City Manager.
Mayor, thank you. If the council wishes, there are also some options there, the technical cleanups that do not pertain to the more of the policy decisions. If I could point out that among those tech, technical cleanups for future rounds, if you, if you adopt the ordinances as proposed, if someone were given a provisional permit, they would have sixty days to apply for the conditional use permit. So that would also be addressed.
Okay. All right, so I entertain a motion by council to approve staff recommendations number one and two, which are the cleanup items, the ordinances.
So moved.
A motion by Mayor Protembaka. Second by Councilmember Cabrera. Okay, go ahead, please vote. Approved. Three yes, two no for the cleanup items, those ordinances. And then the one on...
We did both.
Go ahead, City Attorney. You going to say something?
And staff would like to just point out to the council that, that moving forward with number five, with the changes to five and nine is, is a cleanup item, including the removal of the, of the number of permits. In order to, in, in order to maintain a status quo, Resolution Number, Resolution A, you should, you should take action on Resolution A, which will basically maintain the status quo of the number of permits that were set by the ordinance.
And, and should you, should you bring this back at a subsequent meeting and wish to change the number of permits, you would adopt another resolution to replace this. So the technical cleanup is one and two, and then the resolution that says that we're, for, for the time being, no changes to the number of permits that you had already approved when it was part of the ordinance. Now it would be part of the resolution.
So just to clarify, the one that we did, that we did vote on, which are the cleanup items.
And if I may, just to make sure, the numbers one and two, it does not include changing the number of permits tonight?
It, it doesn't specifically include changing the number of permits. One of the cleanup items is, the ordinance that was in place said that you can set the numbers by ordinance or resolution. And, and that creates some vagueness, which the staff wanted to address. And obviously, you've expressed a desire to set those by resolution. And so, taking action on Chapter Nine to remove that vagueness would then necessitate a vote on a resolution, which would basically set the status quo, which is your Option A. The Resolution A maintains the status quo. It doesn't change the number of permits, doesn't do anything, and it's consistent with your action on one and two.
So on number three, Mayor, if you wanted to maintain the current number, you would also entertain a motion to adopt the resolution, which we list as Option A, which defining certain processes that says no change.
Okay. And then if we don't adopt a resolution, what does that do? City Attorney? City Attorney?
It'll continue to, to have the vagueness that, that is...
It'll just have that vagueness?
Well, it'll, it'll be magnified. You have taken action on the number of permits. That, that number is going to maintain, is going to stay. But, but in order to have clarity and in order to be consistent in the way you're moving forward on this, and that is accepting the cleanups, I would recommend that you take action on, in, under, yeah, under number four. It's, it's the Option A. You, you still have number three, which is a resolution that, that puts in the new application process. And obviously, I would encourage you to take action on that, whatever way you, you decide to do it. But that's, that's a motion that should move forward. And then with regard to number four, which has the four different resolutions dealing with the number of permits, Option A under number four basically maintains the status quo. There's, there is no change.
But I, I thought if there's no agreement, you can just move that item to a different meeting?
Well...
As far as the number four? I understand the number one, two, and three.
Okay.
Just no resolution, I mean, no...
Right. But, but in order to move the item, in, in order to move the item forward to another meeting, to whether a stash, study session, whatever the council decides to do in the future, a, a clean placeholder would be to adopt A under number four. And this way, you're consistent with the changes that you're proposing to number nine. Or, ordinance changing number nine, or Chapter Nine.
Okay. Mayor Protem? Do you have a comment?
Yes, I had a question. So if we adopt one through four with the options, if we revisit this, we can make changes to Title Five and Title Nine through a resolution?
No, that is not correct. You can set number of permits by resolution. Any changes that you make to the code need to be done by ordinance, again. But, but if you follow staff's recommendation under this new process that, that is emerging, and that is take action on that resolution for A, which all, all it'll do is maintain status quo. It's a placeholder for you to take action in the future, and that action in the future could be taken by resolution.
All right, entertain a, a motion by council to approve... Well, we already approved sta, number one and two, so to approve staff recommendation, three, Option A?
No, Mayor, I'm sorry for, for jumping in...
No status.
Three, no, three is the, the new procedures. And again, I, I would encourage you to take action on that, whichever way the council wishes. But basically, that sets in place the application process for any future applications. And it has nothing to do with numbers, it has nothing to do with... But originally, it was the initial application process. The initial application is over. Staff has proposed to you now a, basically a permanent application process for any future permits, including, for example, testing, which we haven't had any applications yet. And council, under the action it took in April, allowed for two testing permits. We haven't received any applications. Putting the application process in place through taking action number three would provide set, set of rules for those new applicants.
Okay, so entertain a motion by council to approve staff recommendation number three?
So moved.
Move by Mayor Protembaka? Second by Councilmember Cabrera? Please vote. Okay, and then entertain a motion by council to approve staff recommendation number four. And given that there's no consensus or majority, we'll go with Option A.
Correct.
So moved.
Please vote. It's approved, four yes, one no?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for bearing with the process.
No worries. Okay, we'll go straight to reports. March Joint Powers Commission, Mayor Protembaka?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, I'm providing an update from the recent March Joint Powers Commission meeting. The commission, the commission accepted road and utility easements needed for the previously approved acute behavioral health hospital just north of the U.S. Vets Project. The commission also conducted a public hearing about the March Business Center in the median south campus, which is south of Van Buren, west of Riverside National Cemetery. Following the public hearings, the commission approved a general plan amendment and EIR addendum, approved a plot plan for a retail commercial and office commercial development, and approved a plot plan for five hundred thousand square feet industrial building. And that concludes my report.
Go ahead and do the School District City Joint Task Force.
Okay, thank you. We met today for the Joint Task Force meeting. In addition to the city representatives from Moreno Valley, we had representatives from Moreno Valley Police Department and Valverde Unified School District. The Moreno Valley Police Department reported that Coffee with a Cop will be held on October twenty-fifth from eight AM to ten PM. I'm sorry, eight AM to ten AM, two hours, at the Starbucks located near LaSalle and Iris Avenue. Attendance for these events has increased over the years. And if you watch them on Facebook, you'll see that our police department has really reached out to the community. And I encourage you to please bring your children to meet our fine police officers at these events. They are kid-friendly. The Moreno Valley Public Works Transportation Division is in the process of installing student recognition banners for the Moreno Valley and Valverde Unified School Districts and the Riverside County Office of Education Academy. These banners recognize students with outstanding achievements. The Think Together, and we saw them here tonight, National Lights On After School, will be held on October twenty-fifth from four to six PM at all schools in both Moreno Valley and Valverde Unified School Districts in conjunction with the National Lights On After School event. Think Together staff will read to twenty thousand youth through the National Read for the Record event, October twenty-second through the twenty-sixth. Valverde Unified School District reported that the Rancho Verde High School received the honor of marching in the Rose Parade in 2020. So we're going to have to get to the Rose Parade to support our Rancho Verde High School students. Now, Valverde Unified School District reported that the Citrus Hill and Rancho Verde High Schools were honored in Sacramento by the California Student Aid Commission for their students' completion rates for the free application for federal student aid and the California Dream Act applications. Both schools were recognized as top finishers in the statewide race to submit competitions. Thank you.
Thank you. Riverside Transit Agency, Councilmember Marquez?
Thank you, Mayor. Riverside Transit Agency, as, as in the past years, will be offering the free rides this New Year's Eve to support those that have to work that evening and to provide a safe alternate mode of travel. The free service will begin on December thirty-first from two thirty PM until the end of that bus schedule. And that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Marquez. City managers report?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protem, members of the council. As is our custom, I'm going to begin my comments by addressing a few things that came up tonight during the meeting. First, a speaker this evening shared his very genuine concerns about educational programs in local schools. We, we could feel his passion for this issue. I need to state for the record and for residents' benefit that our council is very, very supportive of student learning in all of our schools. But it's important to clarify that the city does not operate public schools. Education is provided by independent school districts. And in our community, those are the Moreno Valley Unified School District and the Valverde Unified School District. These districts have directly elected school boards whose members are directly accountable to voters, to residents in our community. These boards hire administrators and teachers. The city council does not. With that said, our, our council takes a very strong role in supporting schools and their students. This council has pioneered programs to supplement school programs. The city offers a wonderful Summer at City Hall program. We also provide summer jobs through the ASTRIC program and the Mayor's Apprenticeship Program promoting employment development, known affectionately as the MAP program. This city relies upon the school districts to provide for the educational needs of our students, and we're proud of the council's programs to supplement school district activities. The second issue pertains to, I, I, I need to address what I must characterize as absurd allegations made by a visitor to Moreno Valley this evening. The most important part of Mr. Hunter's comments is his statement admitting that he hasn't read the documents provided to him, yet he has drawn conclusions, apparently not based on the facts provided. Be that as it may, his statement about my references to practices in Riverside is grossly and, I believe, intentionally misleading. But that comes as no surprise. What I told him was that Moreno, and this isn't an email, I told him that Moreno Valley, like the city he lives in, does not operate on a strict line item budget. In our case, a two-hundred-million-dollar annual budget cannot specify every dollar spent on every pencil that we purchase. That would be ludicrous, and I really believe that Mr. Hunter knows this. I continue to reassure the council and the community that our budgetary processes are sound. They fully comply with the law. The city attorney has also reaffirmed this. But I encourage everyone, don't just take our word for it. Year after year after year, the Government Finance Officers Association awards Moreno Valley with its highest awards for the soundness of our financial practices and our financial reporting. The council and our residents should not be misled by political statements by, by an individual who has no stake in the future of our city. Instead, please rest assured that our award-winning financial practices ensure that, ensure the utmost care in our stewardship of public tax dollars. If I may, I'd like to, to now move on to the topics that I planned to speak about this evening. As we know, tonight's meeting is the last time we will gather prior to the November... As we know, tonight's meeting is the last time we will gather prior to the November 6th election. Passions for our community run particularly high during election periods, and this year has been no different. There are so many wonderful aspects to our community, and among them is that so many residents really do love our community. Our democratic process embraces competing visions for our future. The open exchange of ideas, which we see every day here in Moreno Valley, allows democracy to take shape here in our city and across our great nation. Over the past few months, there have been many such open exchanges about what's best for Moreno Valley. And the words are common. It's all focused on the city's bright future. I'm gonna take us back to 1737, a little before Moreno Valley was around, when Benjamin Franklin was quoted as saying, "Well done is better than well said." So if I may, I'd like to begin the transition from election season by focusing on some of the many great things that our community has done together over the past year or so. We celebrated 17,000 new jobs in the last five years. Those are 17,000 opportunities for our residents to get off the freeway, to engage in their families and their neighborhoods, and to make Moreno Valley stronger than ever before. We celebrated the expansion of luxury shoe and apparel maker Deckers Outdoors, which brought its North American hub to Moreno Valley, and they're expanding. Our hospitality industry is booming. The Quarter Project at Day Street and Eucalyptus is bringing three more hotels, very fine hotels, to our city. We were honored by California's leading economic development group for the Moreno Valley College Promise Initiative and the Higher Mauval Program. We completed a $2.6 million investment to renovate the soccer complex at Community Park. We broke ground on the city's first outdoor amphitheater, right here at the Civic Center. With nearly 600 seats and lush park-like landscaping, this first-class amenity will shine as the area's premier outdoor performance venue. We opened, finally, we opened a brand-new library at the Moreno Valley Mall. We recently demonstrated true democracy in action to our community's youth by moving forward on the skate park at Community Park. It'll provide the safe outdoor space that our young people called for when they petitioned their city council. We recently gave our senior center an extreme makeover. The council's commitment will directly benefit more than 50,000 seniors who use the center each year by giving them a more comfortable and a very dynamic gathering space. I'm almost done, but it's just, we've done so much together. We embarked upon an $11.2 million program to repair roads in all areas of Moreno Valley. This summer, we began upgrading our most heavily-traveled thoroughfares and more than 105 residential streets. We achieved a sixth straight year with a balanced budget and strong fiscal reserves. And finally, our homeless-to-work program began changing lives right here in our community through work experience, access to support services, and a heartfelt hand up to those who had previously given up hope that they would ever regain so many, things that so many of us take for granted, namely, permanent homes and a productive place in society. While I recognize my comments are a bit long tonight, I do appreciate the council's indulgence and the opportunity to spend a few minutes talking about the great strides we're making together. And I have a feeling that Ben Franklin would also acknowledge how much is being done in our town. The key element to all these projects and all of our community's accomplishments is that we have achieved all of this by working together in service to the residents of our Moreno Valley. The staff and I are grateful for the opportunity to serve, and we look forward to all of the great things to come. That concludes my report this evening. Thank you for your indulgence.
Thank you, city manager. City attorney?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. Mayor Potem and council members. Again, to add to what the city manager said, the comments made by the gentleman from Riverside have absolutely no legal basis. Everything that was done was done in accordance with the existing laws. And again, the foundation for his appearance here is, really, has no factual basis. Lastly, I'm gonna keep it really brief. On behalf of all three of your employees, we wish you a very happy Boss's Day. Thank you.
Thank you, city attorney. That brings us to reports and comments from council members who did not speak earlier. We'll go ahead and start with Councilmember Guyba.
Thank you. By the way, the Martiners, five of us, not three.
He meant the three employees.
I'm just making my point. There's, all five of us here are your bosses. That's my point. Hey now, thank you, city manager, for bringing all those topics up there. Very helpful. Because I was at Deckers Monday, and Deckers is doing a wonderful job. They're actually bringing almost all, and I was the one who actually had a chance to represent the city there. And they're gonna be bringing all of their Camarillo operations here by next spring. So that's, that's a wonderful thing that's happened. And by the way, that wouldn't happen if it wasn't for Mike Lee. And thanks for reminding the public that when I was elected in 2014, we went out and got Mike Lee, and we put together an economic development department in order to do just what we're doing. So thank you for tapping me on the shoulder and saying, "You did a good job, Guyba." And I really appreciate that, Tom. And so we've done a lot of wonderful things. And thank you for reminding us that we work very closely with our school district. Because I personally, for several years, have been supporting the autism program at Palm Middle School, which you just finally approved for me to give them some more financing for their program there. And I appreciate that as well. So there's a lot of things that have been going on in our city, and those things don't happen overnight. You're absolutely correct. They had to be put into place years ago when we had the financial ability to do all those things and the wisdom to set the processes in place. We didn't have an economic development department, so we put one into place. And now we have one of the best in the entire county. We didn't have a balanced budget, and thanks to Mayor Owens, as everybody might not like him, but he did help us fix that budget problem. And we moved forward because I was on the Economic Development Subcommittee and on the Finance Subcommittee where all these things were put into place that you're reaping the benefits of today. And you can't do it overnight. The hotels you're talking about on Day Street, I was a planning commissioner when we approved those. So I really appreciate that, Tom, that you're reminding the public how much I've worked so hard for this city over all these years. And we're now seeing the benefit of that, aren't we? You just told me that. We're seeing the benefit of all the hard work.
Give me a question, I'll answer it.
Yeah, you won't answer my question if I ask you. You know, oh, that's fine. I have them too. All right? So, but the point of the matter is, is you're making my point, is that you need to lay a foundation in this city. And we were doing that four years ago, and you're reaping the benefits of it, and thank God for that. And this is what we're seeing. So with the rest of my comments, just let me make a couple of quick ones. I did the Walk to School Day. I do that every year. I support my Moreno Valley Unified School District. So they weren't really doing a whole lot, but I did. So I walked with the kids and the families as they went to school on Wednesday, the 10th. So I'm happy to do that. The senior center, it was a wonderful opportunity for everybody to come out and see all the things we did. If you looked at the ceiling fans and the air conditioning, that was put into place four years ago, wasn't it? Three, four years ago? Yep, yep, Saint Marshall's nodding his head, you know. In my time, we had to move it forward, but we have those, we have the thing. And I was asked to do the installation of the new senior members program. So I just wanna make that fact clear too, because you did a wonderful speech, Tom, wonderful speech. But you realize that, thumbs up, my friend, wonderful speech, introducing all the hard work that previous councils did. And now we are reaping that benefit. We are reaping that benefit. It's not just, yeah, you chuckle your little heart out. I wish the camera could swing around and show you, you know. But the reality is, is that this council was made up of five people working together five years, four years ago. And as a result, we did a wonderful job of bringing the future to this city, and we're starting to reap that benefit. And three years prior to that, I was a planning commissioner. So you're seeing a lot of the planning commission agreements that's now coming forward. So it doesn't happen overnight, Tom, and you don't have it overnight. So thank you very much.
Councilmember Marquez?
Okay, well, I just wanna give a shout-out to Tom, our city manager. You did a fabulous job, Tom, with Caltrans, meeting with them about our trash. You know, for many, many years, people would ask, "Why can't we work with Caltrans?" Well, we did. Thanks to Tom and his staff, we have an agreement to clean up our freeways, especially on ramps, off ramps. But also, Caltrans went a step further. They got a contractor, they, in agreement with a contractor, to pick up the trash that the homeless left out there. And there was a lot of trash. So it's all coming together, and hopefully, within the next couple of months, our freeways are gonna be cleaned. And people drive through there, they're gonna say, "Look at Moreno Valley, how clean it is." But as we clean the freeways, where do the homeless go? Back in the Moreno Valley. I've drove around this past week, and I seen the results. They have nowhere to go other than come back into Moreno Valley, and then they leave their trash. So we gotta start all over again. But it's this. I'm asking the residents out there, help us. Call our offices and give us some suggestions how we can clean up the city with the homeless, at the same time to help the homeless. We can't do it ourselves. Staff cannot do it all themselves. I'm asking the residents of Moreno Valley, help us. Give us some suggestions, some guidance, which way to go. And we would clean up this homeless problem out here. Secondly, I would like senior citizens' rededication. And again, to staff, Patty and all your staff, awesome job. I mean, that needed a makeover. I'm sorry, but I've lived here for 40 years plus, and I don't think I've ever seen that place spruced up as now. I've had some seniors say, "We need to clean up that place," and we did, Patty. Thank you very much and your staff for doing that.
Thank you.
Next thing is, yesterday, I played golf yesterday. Yeah, I took time off and went out to play golf. But I did it for one reason only, is to benefit the veterans here in Moreno Valley, Inland Empire. The U.S. Vets had a tournament yesterday, and they asked me to compete with them or play with them to raise some money for our vets. And I kinda sucked it in with my shoulder, and I says, "I'm gonna go out there and play golf." And I did. U.S. Vets, they brought the money in. We had some former football players out there golfing with us. We had one gentleman, he must have been seven foot tall, big guy. I guess he was a linesman for the Rams, and he was bending over to hit the ball, and he had a short golf club. I looked at him and says, "How is he gonna hit that?" Well, he doesn't play golf. He was just out there to, you know, raise some money for the vets. And I really appreciate those type of people that are coming out. But it was for a cause, and next year, it's gonna be bigger and better. So if you play golf and you wanna contribute to the vets organization, mark it for your calendar next year around this time. Come out and play golf with us, and you'll see the happy faces. Lastly, is the, I can't touch on the homeless. Let's, it's not against the law to be homeless, we all know that. But we got to do something with these homeless people. What can we do? Help us out. Give us some more suggestions, what to do with these homeless. We can't send them out of the city because you know what's gonna happen. Wherever they go, they're gonna send them right back to Moreno Valley. So we gotta do something to help these homeless people. If it's a shelter, let's look into a shelter. We've got facilities on base. Might be able to convert into a homeless shelter. We need to do something. We need to do something, and I'm asking the residents out there, help us with a solution. Thank you very much, and everybody have a nice evening.
Thank you, council member. We have council member Cabrera.
Thank you. So I'm not gonna repeat too much because a lot of what's been said was some of what I was gonna talk about. But I just wanna mention, you know, since it is gonna be our last meeting before November 6th, we're gonna have some new faces, at least one here up on the dais. And I just wanna thank the staff, all staff members, bless you, for helping us out through the entire process and for helping us accomplish the goals that the five of us up here have, that all of you have, that the residents have, things that we've wanted to see here in the city. We've been able to do, I think, most of that. We can't get everything done, but we've been able to do a lot, such as working on community garden, opening the next library, getting the third library here in town. I also wanna thank the students who are back here in the seats for sticking all the way through. Yeah, I see a lot of familiar faces from Moreno Valley College. And I'm a former student, as well as the mayor is a former student and a teacher there also. And it's really good to see all of you here. And I'm praying, and I'm asking everyone out there, and all of you as well, to pray that we get that $5 million grant through the mayor's challenge, through Bloomberg, because we're gonna be able to help so many students here in our city. Please, let's all keep praying for that, so that we get the $5 million and not the $1 million. We're gonna get something, but we'll see what we're gonna get. And the rededication of the senior center, I was there, those seniors are so happy. They were eating, and some of them were dancing, and they told me to come back for Zumba, so I said, "Okay, I'll be back, I'll be back to dance." And Moreno Valley Ranch Golf Course, that's coming back, it's looking so nice. And the shopping carts, that's one thing, it hit me today. I realized that the shopping cart issue is not as bad as it was before. And I know that's something that we've been working on, residents have given us suggestions as well. So I'm really happy to see that it's a little bit less, less of an eyesore out there. And as we keep tackling these issues of picking up trash on the freeways and on the streets and empty lots, and what else? The amphitheater was mentioned, and, you know, that's just part of a bigger vision, I think, that we're trying to build a town center. And we already have city hall here. Previous council from years ago invested heavily to build the police department here. And we have the rec center. Now we're gonna build the amphitheater. And I think we have a really good opportunity with the vacant property across the street and also the shopping centers on the north side of Alessandro to maybe remodel some of that and do something really nice here at this intersection. So it's just an idea, just a vision, and hopefully, all of this comes together better and better as time progresses. I also wanna wish everyone a happy Halloween. I'm sure many of us are gonna be eating candy. Personally, I eat a lot of chocolate. That's the, that's the, that's the one that gets me. But I wanna wish everyone, you know, a lot of fun, and please be safe out there. I wanna mention that there's a lot of events happening. If you don't know where to go trick-or-treat, a lot of churches have events going on on the 31st. A lot of churches, just maybe Google around or look on Facebook, and you can go to some of those. They have food and candy and music and all of that. I also wanna mention the food pantry. Again, I know I talk about it every time, but if anyone needs food or anything of that nature, even pillows or mattresses, my church does a food pantry every first and third Saturday of the month. I know Moreno Valley College has one, and I spoke to someone over at the college to see if we can partner together, to see if we can help each other out even more. And that's how we get things done. We collaborate with each other. We have that open communication. And we don't, we don't struggle to sit down at the table and talk about, all right, these are the issues. How are we gonna solve them? And the last point I wanna talk about is the homelessness. I was just at the Inland Empire Poverty Summit the other day, and that was one of the things that came up, you know, the shortage of housing in California, which leads to increased mortgages, increased rents, also leads to homelessness. And I think we have a really good opportunity to build on the homeless-to-work program, start new partnerships with nonprofits and the hospitals that we have in town to provide services like mental health services. And then we need to tackle the housing issue, whether it's a shelter or a new form of housing. But we need to work on it, and it can't just be Moreno Valley. We need the help of other cities and preferably the entire state of California to tackle this, the homeless issue here in our state, and we're moving in the right direction.
Thank you, Councilmember Cabrera. Okay, Mayor Potembaka?
Wow.
Wow. You know, when it's a controversial issue, we have, you know, two sides, and we're not always, everyone's not going to be happy, you're not going to get 100% support, you're not going to get 100% satisfaction, and it's a controversial issue. Personally, I have a client that has cerebral palsy and tremors, and he uses CBD for his wellness, and he doesn't use the typical western medications, because it affects his liver, but, so I do promote and support the medical use of cannabis for an alternative treatment. I don't see anything wrong with it, and if people want to smoke it for recreational reasons, you know, I can't say anything about that either, because it's not up to me. It's up to us as a council to promote the businesses and to legalize them and to monitor them, and that's what we're trying to do, is monitor them and keep the black market out. As far as, I just want to say that I have a lot of respect for our employees. As you can see during the special presentations, we bring them up, we recognize them, and because they need recognition, they do need that, because they do such a good job, and I know they're paid a salary, but nevertheless, we need to recognize them for the outstanding job that they do, because they go beyond the call of duty, and because we want the community to know that we have someone, for example, a crime analyst. I mean, we need to bring out the job description so that even our youth can aspire to fill these positions later on in life, so that's very important. I don't appreciate anyone from the dais belittling or harassing or degrading any of our employees, I don't care who it is, I don't like it, and if I could apologize, I would, but I can't, because it's not my position to do that, because I didn't do anything wrong. I just want you to know that the majority of us up here, I can speak for at least four of us, do respect you highly, and we do recognize Mr. Tom DeSantis as a city manager and the leader of the city. You know, we set the policy, we don't run the city, that's not our job, and we don't micromanage, we don't go out there and tell you how to do your job. We evaluate you every so often, and the results are here, you know, the proof is in the pudding. Look what we're doing. Go down Day Street, go to District One, my district, the capital of the city, and look at all the dust around there. Why? Because we're moving dirt, we're not slinging mud. As far as the senior citizen center, I was there, and I was just shocked when I walked in, you know, what was missing? Yeah, I have to admit, it was the smell of the old carpets. I'm not a fan of carpeting, I don't think it's healthy, but, you know, a lot of people use it, but the floor was beautiful, the walls were repainted, and the floors are actually conducive to wheelchairs and walkers. I mean, now our seniors can move around faster and safer. The flooring, the renovation makes it into an open space environment, and I can tell you that our seniors were very pleased with what we've done. And I want to say that it was our mayor, Dr. X. Gutierrez's idea to do this, and I'm the representative, the council liaison for the senior citizen advisory board, and we had meetings, and we put the mayor's ideas into fruition, we got it done, and I just want to say thank you, Mayor, for your good idea, because it's going to make many, many people happy, our seniors and their families, because if our parents, our grandmas and grandpas, all of them, if they're happy, we're happy. So that took place last week, we had the groundbreaking for the amphitheater, and we had lots of people out there, and there's just so many things coming, and you've heard from my fellow council members, from our city manager, of all the great things that are happening. So I just want to say thank you for your work, and be certain that we appreciate you, we appreciate your work, but keep on working, don't, you know, don't get complacent or don't get satisfied, because Moreno Valley is a great city and we continue to grow. So let's keep building and let's keep moving in the right direction and in a positive manner. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protembaka, and I would echo those words, you know, of moving in the right direction. I just wanted to say, you know, that today, for example, we approved an additional, it was in the consent calendar, an additional $100,000 for after-school programs. So that's going to help about sixty new students at Vista Verde Middle School make sure that they're receiving at least an education from three to six, which is basically the danger zone a lot of times for these kids. So I'm really happy about that. The amphitheater, obviously, we had the groundbreaking for that, it was a great, great event, I think it's going to be one-of-a-kind, I mean, something that's going to really support our community, and it's going to bring the performing arts, and it's really nice that it's right there on Alessandro too, so that's a good thing. I did attend the senior citizens' rededication ceremony. I'm happy that, you know, through the leadership of the staff as well and the support of the council, that we were able to get that rededication done, and, I mean, it's really beautiful, the open floor plan, the wood flooring, the new paint job inside, I mean, the seniors were just so happy about it, and in fact, afterwards, you know, they wanted to talk to me, and, you know, they were just really, really happy about it, and one of the seniors came to me, and he was, I was really surprised, he was from the Homeless-to-Work program, and he happened, so he happens to be in the Homeless-to-Work program, and he was thanking me for the program, for bringing the program to the city and providing that job to him, and I was just like, almost in tears, you know, I mean, he was in tears, and I was just shocked, you know, to see him there. And so a gentleman actually interviewed him afterwards, and, you know, he was really sharing with that person how well the program has been for him and his family. I also want to thank the staff, thank you for all that you do, especially when we developed the strategic plan together, you know, two years ago, I know that that was a lot of work. I know that we've been able to accomplish a lot of initiatives, and also through your leadership, Tom. I know that you are a great leader, and, you know, despite what someone says up here, you know, you're doing an excellent job, just keep moving forward, and the same thing goes for our city attorney and also city clerk as well. I am also excited that the mayor's challenge is coming up, so we will know in the next two weeks, you know, if we win or not, you know, so cross our fingers, you know, the program, Moval Learns, is a program where we're actually paying students to go to college. So we're providing that universal student income to students, and while they go to college, they're actually getting paid. So that's our whole idea, you know, because we do have a college rate that is low, and so we need to make sure that we do whatever it takes to increase that rate. I also wanted to just mention that there were some comments about speed bumps and speed humps. I do believe that the staff has reached out to that individual, and so, you know, Mr. Chavez, if you are listening, make sure that you reach out to the staff, because they have reached out to you, and they provided the paperwork that you need in order to submit for the speed bumps. And again, I just want to encourage everybody, you know, November 6th is coming along, to go out there, you know, make your choice known and vote. Last day to register to vote is October 22nd, and again, thank you so much tonight for, what a great meeting. Thank you. We'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting at 9:11 PM.